Good evening. Good evening, I'd like to bring this meeting of the Mountain View City Council to order, please. Thank you. My guest is my guest live. I didn't think it was on. No? Is it on? Well, I'll use my cheerleader voice until they get it on. Uh, okay. All right.
You have to talk into it.
All right, can you hear it now? Is this working now? Louder? Okay. All right, well, the first thing we're going to do, as we do every, um, every, uh, meeting, is have a pledge of allegiance. And Marissa is going to join us in that, lead us in that. Thank you. Will everybody please stand? It's right behind us.
This is like a test if I know that. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, through liberty and justice for all." That was clearly a test. I just learned my name, but...
Very good, very good. Thank you for doing that. All right, and then, next, we have the roll call. I see that everyone is here except for Councilmember Ince. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. And now, I would just like to have a moment of silence for our, um, our friends in France who have suffered a terrible tragedy today in Nice on Bastille Day. Thank you. We have no consent calendar tonight, and we have, but we do have oral communications for the public. Now, oral communications are a time on every California, um, public meeting where people who want to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda may come forward and speak to us. Do I see anyone who wants to come forward and speak? Please come down. Thank you. Okay? Go ahead.
Um, I would like to, uh, speak about the Grant Road Hospital, um, expansion and ask the council to reconsider their, um, uh, broad approval of that project for two reasons. One is that the neighborhoods that are adjacent to Grant Road were not notified of the project, and many of them don't know what's going on. And second, that the study that was done was faulty in many aspects, including that it didn't study the prime time on Grant Road and included ride share and bikes for nurses and doctors whom a former nurse even testified they would not ever, um, consider that. So, um, I'm just asking for reconsideration, possibly another way to get in there, or, um, maybe locating the mental health center in another location.
Okay. Um, and your name, please?
Lori Robin.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good evening, my name is Katerina Blazek. I live in the Moffett Boulevard neighborhood, and I have what I think is an uncontroversial and simple request, which is if you can send the landscape crew out to look at the median on Moffett Boulevard between Middlefield and the 85 North off-ramp. It's getting to be really tall, and it's becoming a safety issue with not being able to see traffic to make the left turn onto the 85 South on-ramp. And if you could also have the landscape crew look at other places in Mountain View that might be getting a little overgrown, that would be great. Thanks.
Thanks. Thanks for your comment. Another speaker?
Hi, um, I wanted to, Lynda Curtis, I wanted to comment on, uh, when you planned the new transportation center, I see lots of possibilities to do a ramp at not much of an incline, and for pedestrians to use an elevator to get on an overpass for pedestrians and cyclists across the tracks and Central Expressway. So if eventually we can join Atherton, Millo Park, and Palo Alto in their endeavor to have Caltrans lowered and Expressway lowered, and the extension of light rail, and the addition of the bullet train put at a lower grade than all the cross streets, we'll be on board with them, we'll be on board with Sunnyvale, with Central Expressway, which all they have to change is Mary Avenue, and we'll have a real big picture view of the future. We might see it go all the way up to San Francisco. I've worked with people that have devised ways for the Three Creeks to get across without changing their grade, and actually Palo Alto has the plan where they plan, um, to build housing above Central Expressway because it's now at a lower grade, and between cross streets they can actually put a lot of high-density new housing and add a lot of units to the city, which I think is important. And I want us to consider things like that before we commit to an underpass for pedestrians and cyclists that have to have pumps in case of rain or flood, that have other problems. But to cut it short, let's look at a bigger picture and try something else. I want to see a lot more study before we commit, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So I don't see any more speakers, so we'll close the, um, the public comments, oral communications. And now, we're going to move on, uh, we don't have a public hearing. And now, we move on to item seven, which is, um, an item initiated by the council. And, um, I think that that's really why all of us are here tonight. This is a very special meeting. Oh, I also, um, have been asked to just share with everybody why we're not in the city council chambers. Uh, the city council chambers are being renovated, and the idea was that, um, they would do this construction during our, um, summer break, but it turns out we need to have two meetings during our summer break, so they're both going to be in here. And, um, uh, it looks like the Performing Arts Center has done a great job of setting things up so we can be comfortable and having, uh, mics and all that sort of thing, and I think it should work just fine. But that's why we're here. Okay. So, um, 7.1, rent regulation ballot measure for November 8th, 2016. Why are we having this meeting? Well, circumstances have changed. Over the last 10 months, there's been a steady stream of renters coming forward to explain to us about how severe the rent crisis is, how many people are being forced to move due to the high rents, and it's truly threatening the diversity of our community. I don't think there's anyone in this room that hasn't been touched by the 50% increases in rents that have happened in Mountain View in the last few years. It's touched everybody, and it's, we're worried that it's ripping apart the fabric of our community. What there hasn't been agreement on is what to do about it. I believe that our goal should be to provide a balanced system of renter and landlord protections to help support a healthy rental market in the city of Mountain View in both the short and the long run. The city council did pass, as many of you know, several measures that should help in one way or another. Many people, myself included, didn't think that these measures were strong enough. In response to this set of protections passed by the city council, our tenants have organized, and they've developed a rent regulation or rent stabilization measure for the November ballot. Today, I understand that that ballot measure qualifies for the vote, so it will be... Now, I'm, excuse me. I, uh, I can, I can understand your delight that this has happened, but we're going to try, we're going to try and have an orderly meeting here because it's going to get very late, and you, I know you really want us to work through all of this business, all the business that we have before us tonight. So, let's, uh, let's not have, let's, let's go outside when this is over and scream and yell, and, uh, enjoy, enjoy...
Can you talk to all the...
Enjoy it. Okay. All right. So this belief, uh, that this Community Stabilization and Fair Rent Act will qualify, or has qualified, has really changed the circumstances. When the council voted on all the ordinances that came before us, uh, that wasn't the case. There were theoretical discussions that there might be an ordinance, nobody knew exactly what it would contain, but that's changed now. We know exactly what it contains, and we know that it's qualified. So we have some circumstances that are really changed. I myself signed this position, uh, petition because I, I think this measure, um, uh, I think we need a much more comprehensive system than we have. And while I agree with most of the components of the proposed measure, I don't agree with one important aspect of it, and that is the fact that it's being proposed as a charter amendment. And I'm going to explain to you why I don't like that part of it, and why we're here tonight to talk about some things which might provide similar protections but would not have that, um, problem. If it were passed, it would only be able to be, um, it would only be able to be, uh, amended if we had another vote of the people, and that would have to take place during a regular election, which only happens every other year. Anyway, having worked in government all of my career, I've observed that no matter how well-intended and how well-drafted an ordinance is, or a leg, a piece of legislation is, there are always unintended consequences. And, um, they, uh, if, if you have a charter amendment, it makes it virtually impossible to fix these because it's so difficult to have a vote of the people. I know that most, many of you who have been in this room and been involved in the tenants' organization know exactly what I'm talking about when I say how difficult it is to get something on the ballot. You've worked very hard to do that. Um, as your mayor, I have to think about what will be long-term, the long-term best action for our community as a whole. Um, and with that in mind, I've called this special meeting to allow us to have one last conversation about whether this is the best way to meet our goals. And, um, to do that, I think that what we're planning to do is we are going to get presentations on the suite of ordinances that the city council has passed over the years that do provide some rent protection. And you'll get to hear just kind of what the whole program is together at the same, and then after that, we're going to have a presentation by the tenants' association, and they're going to explain to us what are all the components of their measure. So we'll be able to compare what do we exist, what's the existing system, and what is being proposed, what's the difference, and what would we need to fix it so that, um, there was enough to meet the need. So again, why are we having this meeting? We're having this meeting because circumstances have changed. There is concern that a charter amendment can only be sa, be changed by another vote of the people, which may not be best for the city of Mountain View in the long run. And it's prudent to take this time, this opportunity, to review the existing protection program that we have in place and compare it to the Community Stabilization and Fair Rent, to see if there is something short of a charter amendment that will meet our goals. I did not call this meeting to undermine the Community Stabilization and Fair Rent Act, but rather to see if we could craft an option that would have similar protections but not the issues of a charter amendment. Okay, now, this is a little different meeting than we normally have, and I think there are a lot of people here who haven't been to a meeting, so I'm going to go over how we're going to run this meeting. After my introduction here, um, the city attorney will explain the existing, um, rental program that we have here in Mountain View. There's about five ordinances that make it up. Then the tenants' coalition will give a presentation. I want to thank them for being willing to come forward and do that tonight. I know that took a lot of work, and they didn't have a lot of notice. And that will be given jointly by, uh, I understand by Joan McDonald, Juliet Brody, Melissa Morris, Angel Santiago, and Job Lohez. Then we'll have council questions, and, um, hopefully we can have, uh, we can focus on clarifying questions to keep this going as, as, as quickly as possible. And then we're going to have public comment, and I can see that there are a lot of people who would like to talk. And, um, we'll want to hear from everyone, um, because this is such an important, uh, item, but at the same time, we want to limit the amount of testimony, we ask you to limit the amount of testimony to people who are saying something that's new. If you're saying something that's been said before, um, you could just get up and say, "I agree with, you know, what, what was said before by, by so-and-so." That would be helpful. Or you could ask, if you know that you're saying something that, um, is shared by many people, you could ask for a show of hands for how many people share that viewpoint. Um, but the idea is we want to have a, um, a very respectful meeting. We want everyone who wants to be heard to be heard, but we, um, we also want everyone to feel safe, um, sharing whatever viewpoint that we, that they have. Good point. Uh, tonight, we'll have 90 seconds for each speaker, and our city clerk over here will be, um, keeping the time, so when she lets you know that it's time to go, um, please be respectful of that and move on so the next speaker can talk. Um, also, uh, if you need translation services, we do have, um, a, we do have someone to help you with that, and you can speak in, um, you can speak in, I hope it's only Spanish because I think we only have Spanish translation, but, uh, you can speak in Spanish for 90 seconds, and then, um, that will be summarized at the end, what you've said. So, um, I also wanted to talk about, then we'll bring it back to the council for deliberation, um, and we'll work through the council questions that were in the council report. I don't know how many of you have had a chance to read that, but it's 7.1, and it is, um, available on the city website. So, uh, that's, you know, that's about it, I think, for the process. Um, it's going to be a lengthy evening. We may take a break or two, but, um, I thank you all for your interest in this civic issue. It's really important to have people participate in these democratic processes, and this is really, uh, this is really seriously where government happens. So I applaud all of us for taking part. Okay. So, all that said, thanks for listening. Um, I'm going to turn it over now to, um, our city staff, and I believe Janie Quinn, our city attorney, will be making a presentation with assistance from Krishan Cobra.
Thank you. What I thought I would do is review the existing ordinances that the council has adopted to address rent, um, related issues, and, perfect. Uh, the first one is a tenant relocation ordinance, which was adopted in 2013, and we amended it in 2014. And this applies, um, through the development process, when there is a vacation of four or more rental units. And rental units in this ordinance is slightly different than, um, how rental units are defined in the upcoming two ordinances. A rental unit is a habitable structure that's offered for rent, and what this, the focus of this ordinance is really dealing with the displacement of renters when a property is developed or remodeled. And so there are a number of factual circumstances that it applies to, including when a landlord decides to remove rental units from the housing market, when rental units are demolished or remodeled or converted to condominiums, or perhaps change from a residential use to a non-residential use. And it's handled through the application process, and the reason for that is to ensure that adequate notification is provided to the residents who will be affected. And it also outlines a process where they are, um, they receive a lot of information and are told very early on that this is going to be happening. The eligible households include those who earn 80% or less of the median household income, and the relocation assistance includes a refund of the security deposit, provided that they're entitled to a refund, 60-day subscription to a rental agency, a cash equivalent of three months' rent, and there are also provisions for special circumstance households to receive additional relocation assistance. The second ordinance in place in the city of Mountain View is the Right to Lease Ordinance, and this one... Sorry, that's okay. This one was, um, adopted by the council late last year, and we've already amended it once to, um, to clarify some language that we wish we had drafted perfectly the first time, but in implementing it, we discovered that there, there needed to be a slight modification to clarify. This applies to any tenant that, um, a rental unit in this ordinance is a dwelling unit that's in a single structure that contains three rental dwelling units. And basically, excuse me, what the ordinance requires is that if you have a willing landlord and a willing tenant, and you want to enter, enter into a lease relationship, that the landlord offer two options for the lease term, a six-month option and a one-year option. It doesn't require a landlord to rent to a tenant, and it doesn't really, um, have any special provisions when that relationship ends. It's just each time a landlord and a tenant desire to enter into a rental arrangement that a written lease be offered to the tenants. The council was very concerned and wanted to make sure that if the tenant and the landlord agreed to a separate term, that that was perfectly fine, but just the thought was, if they have a written lease agreement in place, they have assurance during the term of the lease as to what the deal would be. And we just implemented this ordinance, so it has some interesting provisions about how to deal with the rental agreements that were already in place when the ordinance took effect, and for the new ones after that, and also some additional protections for renters who aren't a month-to-month lease, that, um, a landlord go back to them every year if they're still on a month-to-month, and say, "Are you sure you wouldn't like a written lease now?" There's no obligation on the tenant to accept that. Um, there was also concern by the council that it might, this ordinance could impact the rental rates being charged, and so there's a provision that requires that the rental rates, um, cannot be, cannot exceed what's required for a month-to-month rental. And finally, the council chose to make a violation of this ordinance a crime, so it's an infraction with specified fines for each violation up to, um, for the third, and third violation, and subsequent to that in a year is $500. And, um, a violation of the ordinance is, and a tenant would be able to use that as a defense if there was a legal action brought by the landlord in court. And finally, this has the most slides. This is the recently adopted Rental Housing Dispute Resolution Program Ordinance, and this program applies to all rental properties in the city of Mountain View that's defined the same as the right to lease. A rental unit in this context is, again, where there are three or more dwelling units in a single structure. And it applies to all rental units. It's not just those after 1995 because it's not considered a form of rent regulation. And the specific disputes that are included in the program would be rent increases that exceed a total of 7.2% rent increase in a 12-month period, service reduction, which is defined as a, a reduction in level of services, um, and for example, if there was a pool when you entered into the agreement with the landlord to rent the place and the pool's no longer there, that would be considered a service reduction. 30- to 60-day notices of termination, there was a great deal of discussion by that, by the council on that topic, that's included. The failure of the landlord or disputes over maintenance and repairs, security deposit disputes, and a termination by the tenant prior to the lease term. So if a tenant required flexibility due to, uh, change in work circumstances or illness, that they would have the ability to utilize this, uh, program in order to be able to, to terminate the lease in advance of the agreed-upon term. Like the Right to Lease Ordinance, there is a requirement that the landlords notify the tenants of this program and of this ordinance. Either the tenant or the landlord can access this program. Project Sentinel is the third-party administrator for the city, so Project Sentinel, um, has experience in mediation, would handle all of the cases, and it has a 21-day timeline. So within 21 days of learning of the dispute, the obligation's on the individual who wants to participate in the program to contact Project Sentinel and get the process started. It's a three-step process. The first is conciliation, which can be something as simple as somebody from Project Sentinel... Oh, I moved to the next slide. Something as simple as the, the, um, individual, the case manager at Project Sentinel will contact both the tenant and landlord and see if the dispute can be resolved informally. If that doesn't work, then, um, the parties are, if one, if the person who initiated the process wishes to go to mediation, it's mandatory that both parties attend the mediation, and, uh, there, the hope is that the mediator can resolve the dispute between the parties. Where there is, um, a dispute over a rent increase in excess of the threshold or service reduction, then both parties can be required to attend arbitration, but the arbitration is non-binding. And what happens is that if it's a rent increase, for example, the landlord needs to prove to the arbitrator why the rent increased over the threshold, so that would be any increase over the 7.2%, there is a threshold, any increase over the 7.2%, why that's reasonable, and there are a number of factors that are listed, or a number of criteria for the arbitrator to consider in making that decision. And at the end, the arbitrator would issue an advisory opinion to both parties, but it's non-binding. And at any point in the process, the, the, the parties could enter into a written agreement. There was a lot of discussion over the retaliation provision in the program, and it's, it states very plainly in the ordinance that you cannot retaliate against any individual who accesses the program. The program is funded by a fee that's imposed on each rental unit, and there's a sunset date in this ordinance, and what that means, that this program will cease at the end of September in 2019 unless the city council takes, um, votes to retain the ordinance. So the ordinance is in effect for at least the next three years. Their, violation of this ordinance does not constitute a crime. It is, however, written in the ordinance that both the tenants and the landlords can, um, bring a, cause a, bring an action against each other in court alleging a violation of the ordinance, and a rent increase in violation of the ordinance is not valid. So in order for the rent increase to be valid, you have to follow the steps and the notification requirements in the ordinance, and it's also a defense to an unlawful detainer action that's brought by a landlord who, um, who tried to impose an invalid rent increase. That would be a defense to the tenant. And those are the basic components of the three ordinances that the city council has passed over the last several years to try and address the rent relief issues.
Thank you. Do we have any clarifying questions as staff right now? No? House Speaker Casper Zach?
I mean, maybe you went away. I was, I was curious, though, um, since the ordinances have gone into effect, um, how many cases, it's my understanding there have been several cases already?
Case manager at Project Sentinel for the Rental Housing Dispute Resolution Program. Um, as of today, I believe there's about 20 cases.
Wow. And how have those been shaking out?
Um, several of them have resolved once, uh, the tenant brings up to the landlord that they want to file a written request. That was in the beginning. Um, there's been two mediations, there's one tomorrow. Um, one of them, it resolved after, I have to go back and check, I was on vacation, so other people are, um, doing it. There's a couple mediations, uh, it's... There's a couple of mediations scheduled next week, and one of the mediations where it settled after, it was right before the, it was after I set it for arbitration, so the landlord changed their mind and settled with the tenant.
And these were all rent increase cases?
There's rent increase, maintenance and repair, service reduction, lots of thirty, sixty-day notices too.
Okay, thank you.
Was there anyone concerning eviction?
Thirty and sixty-day notices.
Okay, were they, was there a reason behind it or just?
I was on vacation for two weeks, so I'm not sure about some of those cases. Some of them, they just, people wanted more time to look, so that was negotiated for at least a couple of them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, now we'll have a presentation by the tenants' association. Thank you.
Do you have a copy of this?
Yeah. Juliette?
I did not bring hardcover slides, that was a mistake.
Okay.
We can't see it, so talk very clearly.
Well, there you are, I can't find a larger slideshow.
How many, how many slides?
Seventy, ninety.
I can watch it.
Can I hear you? Do you have a microphone? One sec.
I'm trying to locate the slideshow on the.
Close it.
Yeah, close it. Yeah. Is it on the desktop? No, it's on the. It's on this flash drive, and I'm trying to get access to it.
Open. The top window, it says libraries. Move up from there, there you go.
He ever wanted to have like a hundred people acting as your tech support.
Before Juliette begins, I just want to give a very fast history of how we got here. In.
A little closer to you.
Okay. Before Juliette begins, I want to give a very brief history of how we got here. In April of two thousand fifteen, almost sixteen months ago, we began hearing, a number of us when we were at various gatherings, serious concerns about the rental crisis in Mountain View. This kept building. As a result, a number of us got together to try to brainstorm what we could do. Out of that came meetings with individual council members several times, and development of an enormous number of people coming to each city council meeting, week after week after week, first asking for moratorium, then asking for rent caps and leases, and none of the protections lived up to what the tenants really felt they needed. So in March of this year, we determined to craft our own Community Stabilization and Fair Rent Charter Amendment. We gathered twenty-five percent of the voters in signatures, even though we only needed fifteen percent. It qualified on the ballot today, and we want democracy to work. We don't want any more dislocation. We don't want the fabric ripped from Mountain View.
Good evening. My name is Juliette Brody. I'm an attorney, and I've been working with the Mountain View Tenants Coalition. Thank you. First, I want to thank Mayor Showalter for extending the invitation to the coalition to make a presentation this evening. I'm going to do my best to summarize the charter amendment. I believe that's what the mayor has asked me to do, so that we know what we're talking about. But before I do, I just want to say, first of all, it's been my tremendous honor and really a highlight of my twenty-five-year career, working to help stabilize low-income neighborhoods, to work with this group, the Mountain View Tenants Coalition, has just been a remarkable client, and I just want to honor the work that they have done. It's really, it's, the irony is not lost on us that today is the day this ballot measure qualified for the ballot. Today is the day, and the Mountain View Tenants Coalition is here to ask you, please, don't get in its way now. I understand that the concern that the mayor has expressed about the fact that this is a charter amendment, while the policy preferences, the policy that it contains might be acceptable, the fact that it is a charter amendment somehow dooms it, we can talk about that. I think if we were starting from scratch, we might have a conversation about whether a charter amendment is the best way to do rent stabilization and to prevent displacement in a community. Should this be an ordinance? Should it be a charter amendment? We were trying to have that conversation. It's too late. Under state law, this charter amendment cannot be withdrawn from the ballot. It's not that the coalition could do it and is refusing to do it because they don't like what the council is offering instead. Under state law, we cannot withdraw it, which means, come hook, come crook, active, inactive, anything that happens tonight, on November eighth, the people of Mountain View are going to be asked up or down on this charter amendment. And it is the coalition's position that a competing initiative, a competing measure on the ballot, or frankly, an ordinance passed in haste on August ninth, that its only real effect will be to divide the vote and prevent the charter amendment from getting a fighting chance at the ballot, and that's why we're asking you not to do it. Now, I will summarize what it does. I also want to remind you, say, that the reason, that the decision to do a charter amendment was not a random one. This was not like, oh, well, great, it'll be harder for people to change it. No, it was a very specific strategic decision in light of the fact that in other communities in and around the Bay Area, other interest groups were putting on ballots charter amendments called like the Richmond Homeowners and Private Property Rights Act, which, if it passes in Richmond, will prevent that city council from ever considering rent stabilization until they can undo that charter amendment. There's a battle of charter amendments going on here. We didn't start it, we're just trying to stay in the game, and that's why we felt we had to do a charter amendment. Again, it's not because we got in a room and decided, let's do, make this as hard as possible. The charter amendment that we have drafted is very conventional. This is, it has two basic functions, the two we've been talking about for over a year, rent stabilization and just cause for eviction, and the values that informed its drafting are fairness, to preserve the community and prevent displacement, protect your in-place tenants, and to provide the amount of flexibility and efficiency that can be there under the charter amendment. There's no government affirmative policing of rents, there's no burdensome bureaucracy, it's a complaint-driven system, which I'll explain in a moment. It has a rental housing committee with the power to pass rules and regulations, the very function of which is to, much of the amendment is written in pretty general language that lets a housing committee fill in those blanks to prevent some of these unintended consequences. The version that the Mountain View Tenants Coalition has put on the ballot, I am very familiar with all of the different versions of this sort of standard policy that's being floated around the Bay Area, and I can tell you as a lawyer who's read them all and has worked closely with all the lawyers working on them, the Mountain View Tenants Coalition version is by far the most moderate of them. If you think of this as trade-offs between landlords and tenants, this one gives more to landlords than any other while still protecting tenants' rights. It has the broadest exemptions, exempting from just cause, all of the units that are exempt from rent stabilization, which could be covered under state law, but the Mountain View Tenants Coalition said, no, let's be, let's give broad exemptions. It has the highest annual rent increases of any of the ones being considered in around the Bay, and it is the only one that has a decontrol provision, that if market conditions change and rent stabilization is no longer necessary to prevent displacement, it can go away. This is, although it is a charter amendment, this is not putting rent stabilization for all time and all place for all history, even by its own terms, it can be turned off. As I say, I'm going to start to go, we've been talking about rent stabilization and just cause now for a while, so I'm going to pre-assume some pre-knowledge, but also educate a little bit. Again, this is conventional rent stabilization. Under state law, when there's a vacancy, the landlord can charge any rent that it wants. This is not rent control one point O, where the government tells you how much rent you can charge. This is two point O, which is called rent stabilization, it controls increases only. Once you are in your tenancy, it controls the rent increases, but it doesn't tell you how much you can charge at the beginning of a tenancy. This is not something the rental housing committee that's created under this amendment can change. This is under state law. It's one increase per year, the increase is limited to the rate of inflation, it establishes that if that rate of inflation is below two percent, again, this is one of the most moderate of the provisions being considered in our region, if the CPI for one year, the rate of inflation goes as it has to one point four percent, the tenants' coalition said, no, we think two percent, landlords should be able to get at least two percent, so no matter if the CPI goes below that. And by contrast, if it goes over five percent, it should be limited to five percent. It permits banking, meaning if a landlord skips a year and doesn't want to take the rent increase that year, the landlord can bank it. The materials, the summary, the chart in the materials states that the charter amendment limits banking to two years, but that's not true. There's no time limit, you can bank forever and take them, catch up whenever you choose as a landlord, provided you don't ever go over ten percent in a single year. There is a rollback provision, and I know council has some questions about this. This is another conventional part of these rent stabilization two point O measures. It basically is a way to take back, to give back to tenants, rent increases that are contemplated, that are imposed because the rent stabilization may be coming. So if the market wouldn't otherwise have created, otherwise incentivized this rent increase, but, oh dear, they're considering rent stabilization, I better raise the rent before this could be my last train out, that's not fair, and this has been upheld in courts. If there's a nexus, a legal factual necklace of why you put a rollback provision in, that has been upheld as strong enough to support it. We, the charter amendment here pegs the rollback date to October nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen, the date of the study session where Melissa Morris and a couple other people testified, and there were hundreds of people there. Frankly, we could have used a much earlier date. Joan just told us that six months before this, it was feasible that rent stabilization was, might be coming to town, but nevertheless, in a gesture of reasonableness, picked October nineteenth as the date to do the rollback. I want to emphasize before moving away, by as finishing up the rent stabilization part, this is a very light-touch ordinance. This does not create a big bureaucracy of annual registrations and issuing of certificates and creating government officials who have, take a flashlight and look at every rent in Mountain View and make sure it's compliant. It's nothing like that. This is complaint-based, meaning everyone just goes about their business, complying with the law like we all do, doing our best to stay on the right side of the law, but if someone thinks that there's been a mistake, there's an opportunity, like under the rental housing program, there's an opportunity to seek review. So if a tenant gets a rent increase that she thinks exceeds the CPI, she can initiate a petition. But no one requires landlords, as a matter of course, to, you know, report to the government what they're doing. The second major policy component of the ordinance is just cause for eviction. Again, we've talked about this at some great length. The reason it is in there, as we've talked about, is without just cause for eviction, which I've abbreviated here, rent stabilization is essentially meaningless. If, as we just heard, landlords can give a thirty or sixty day no-cause notice, get the tenant out, because there's no control of the rents at a new tenancy, this creates an obvious economic incentive for landlords to evict a tenant who is able to pay at one level stabilized rent and move in a higher-earning, higher potentially rent-paying tenant. It's just, it's, a rational economic actor would do that, and rent stabiliz, excuse me, just cause for eviction prevents that. Evictions are still permitted. Don't believe the hype that if you have just cause, you can't evict your tenants, we discussed this, it just parallels state law, every reason under state law that you can evict a tenant, you can still evict a tenant for committing a, for a problem, for not paying the rent, for criminal activity. You can also evict non-problem tenants in some circumstances, which I'll show you. All it does is eliminate these no-cause evictions. It protects your existing good tenants, and most importantly, for the coalition's purposes, it preserves income diversity in the community, because otherwise, the tenants who are paying at one level can be evicted for no reason, except for the implicit reason, I can reset the rent to a new market point with a new tenant. This is how you get rid of working families in your neighborhood. If a tenant, under state law, non-payment of rent, criminal activity, breach of the lease, all of those things are good reasons to evict someone. The Mountain View Tenants Coalition actually also added another good cause to evict someone, again, thinking, want to be reasonable here. Under state law, this doesn't exist, but they added the, if a tenant refuses reasonable access to the landlord, to the unit for inspection or anything, that could also be good cause to start an eviction problem, eviction case, excuse me. You can also, as I said, under the ordinance, evict tenants who are not a problem, but because you have another good reason to do so. The coalition understands landlords have lives, landlords have other things going on, and maybe they need to perform substantial repairs, and it's not safe for the tenant to stay in the unit. Well, if the tenant won't agree to go, we got to give the landlord a way to get him out, and the ordinance does that. Similarly, landlord may want to move their brother into the unit. They're allowed to do that, it's their unit, coalition recognizes that, that's a good faith, you can evict the tenant for that. And of course, as under state law, landlord can decide, I don't want to be in the landlord-tenant business anymore, I'm going to withdraw this unit from the market. That is, of course, another good reason to evict a tenant. You can't just have a tenant, by virtue of having a tenant, make you stay in the landlord business for all time. As all the other ordinances and charter amendments that are being considered around the Bay do, in these instances where the tenant has not done anything wrong, but the landlord still has a good reason to evict, the ordinance provides, excuse me, the amendment provides for relocation assistance along, and it actually cross-references to the ordinance that the city attorney just summarized, the relocation ordinance, the relocation assistance ordinance, and piggybacks on that, although it changes the eligibility up to a hundred and twenty percent of the income. There is no role for the rental housing committee in evictions, you don't have to get permission from the government to start your eviction, the committee has no role to play whatsoever. Just to whip through the exemptions, these are the, as I was saying, the broadest exemptions of any initiative that are being considered around the Bay. These types of units up on the screen are fully exempt, and I remember vividly the meeting in which I explained to the tenants' coalition, you understand that under state law, you can cover all these types of units with just cause. It's only, Costa Hawkins only says you can't do state rent stabilization for them, but you can do just cause, what do you want to do? And it was, they said, no, no, we want them fully exempt, we want them fully exempt from both, that, because they want it to be fair. They want, and they saw this as a way to make the law somewhat more expansive and balanced. They also added stuff, exemptions that are not under state law, the granny units, duplexes, et cetera. There are a very small category of units that are exempt only from rent stabilization, but not from, that are covered by just cause, and part of the reason here is, if you build a building, so units that are built between the state law magic date of February nineteen ninety-five, and when this law goes into effect, those will be covered by just cause. But if you build a new building, if someone, because we all know, supply, 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 we need to build, build, build as part of our problem, we don't want to create any disincentive for landlords to build, so the tenants' coalition decided to exempt new construction from just cause as well. The charter amendment does create a rental housing committee that would establish a budget and set and collect fees, this is very conventional, all the measures do it exactly this way. The most important thing this body would do is issue rules, as I was talking about, rules and regulations to fill in the gaps, to, within the confines of the act and consistent with the act, to close down any unintended consequences, to study the act and see what's happening, and see if there are ways consistent with its language, that the committee has the power to make some of those fixes. They also will adjudicate petitions for rent adjustment, which I'll talk about in a moment as my last subject. The composition is five members plus an alternate. I want to make- I want to make it very clear, these folks are appointed by city council at an open meeting, and they have to apply. This is not a back-room deal. This is in the sunshine. You apply, you come, the council's going to ask you questions. You could urge your council to support or not support a candidate for this committee, because you're worried about the decisions it's going to make. This is a democratic process, and they have four-year terms. There are two types of petitions that can be filed, again, balance. A landlord can petition for an upward adjustment of the rent. What this means is, the landlord is taking that rate of inflation, annual rental increase, and it's not enough. They see they can't keep up with repairs. They can't, it's not working. They're not getting the fair rate of return that this charter amendment, and the U.S. Constitution, by the way, insists that they be able to make. They can go to the committee and explain it. And if they can convince the committee that they can't make a fair rate of return, that they're going under, and it's not fair, the committee has the power to say, well, you know, we're going to permit you to take a higher rent increase. Similarly, if a tenant has a reason to think the imposition of the CPI, the rate of inflation, is not fair, they can ask for it to be lower. And in the cities that have had rent stabilization, you know, there's a dozen of them around California, this is, this system is working very well. Tenants can petition if, for example, the landlord is not keeping the premises up, or some other reason, the value has decreased. There used to be a pool, and you talk about when they add a pool, what happens? If they take away the pool, you can petition for a downward rent increase. These hearings are basic little hearings, under oath, preponderance of the evidence, open to the public. The hearing examiner gets appointed by the committee, makes a decision. You could bring an attorney or an advocate, but it's not required. Very important, it is subject to judicial review. If someone doesn't like the decision that the hearing officer has made, they could first appeal to the full committee. If they still don't like the way that came out, they can go to court. So let me talk a little bit about staffing and costs of how this might, how this might work. There's no staffing level set in the, in the charter amendment. It is designed to be, or it could be, cost-neutral to the city, and it gives the committee the power to set an annual registration fee, much like the rent, the mediation ordinance does, and use those recovered fees to cover the costs. So the committee is going to have to decide, how do we want to staff this thing? What do we think is fair? If we have this many staff, what would our per-unit fee be? If we have that many staff, what would it be? The mayor's report, or the council report, talked about $170 per year as a possible cost. I assume that whoever wrote that report is looking at the same range of data that I'm looking at, which is, how much do other cities that have rent stabilization and just cause, how much per unit do they tend to charge? And the $170 per month that's in your report breaks down to about $15 a month per unit if you go with about 14,000 covered units in the city of Mountain View, which I think is a fair estimate, is in a, comes from a staff report from one of these meetings that we've had. $15, $15 per unit, per year, per month, is what Santa Monica charges about. Now, Santa Monica is well-known as having one of the most robust rent stabilization programs in the state. It's used all the time. It's the big example, we don't want to be Santa Monica because they have this giant bureaucracy and, you know, lots of staff. They charge 15 bucks a month per unit. San Francisco, which is more like this one in its lack of registration, certification, all that, and being merely complaint-driven, how much is San Francisco per unit, per month? Three bucks. So it really, there's a range. It's supposed to be cost-neutral, and it could be quite, quite modest. 7,300 people signed a petition. You heard Joan describe how, many times, how many people came to council and said, hey, let's talk about meaningful rent stabilization. Let's talk about how we need just cause for eviction to go along with it. How about you guys do an ordinance on that? We need help here. And after those efforts failed, they did what the democracy lets them do. They took it to the streets, and they took it to the next level. And they spent hundreds of, hundreds of people, thousands of hours, walking the streets of Mountain View, talking to registered voters, and saying, hey, what do you say we vote up or down on this? It might lose, but what do you say we vote up or down on this? As I started off, we didn't come out of this saying, let's do a charter amendment and enshrine this in law for all time, because that's the best way to do this, that we did that because that's where history had placed us. And history places us right now as the day that this ballot measure has qualified. Today is the day. Please don't make today be the day that you put something else on that same ballot in the time-worn tradition of this is how you kill something, you put an alternative next to it, and now nobody knows what to vote for, and they both go down. Please let this get a meaningful up or down vote in November. Okay. Now, we are going to have council questions. So, like my council members too, we don't have a regular system to raise any more. So I'm sure people have questions. Councilmember Casperzak.
Sure, I'll go first, if I should, it might be any different. So I actually had a couple of questions, I think, for the city attorney, just in terms of sort of process in elections and that sort of thing. So if there was another charter amendment on the ballot, it ultimately comes down to which gets the most votes, and that's the one that becomes operative, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and if, if there was a charter amendment of all, let's put it, this qualified, this is going on the ballot, the council has to take action on August 9th, but it has no discretion, it's just, we have to take the action and put it on the ballot. So this, the measure that qualified today will be on the ballot in November, correct?
Right, once the council takes the ministerial action of certifying the results from the registered voters, and then we adopt a resolution to send to the county so they can be on the ballot, yes.
So this one will be on the ballot, but if the council were to put on another measure, but it was an ordinance, not a charter amendment, if it got more votes than the charter amendment, but the charter amendment also passed, which would, which would go into effect?
The charter amendment is superior, so it would be effective over the ordinance.
Okay.
And I believe there's express language in the charter, proposed charter amendment that states that it overrides any similar ordinances.
Right. And then, finally, a charter amendment cannot have, so let's say the council wanted to put on an alternative charter amendment. Is it possible to include language within the charter amendment that sort of administrative errors or things can be changed by the council, or because it is a charter amendment, it can only be modified by a vote of the people?
Under the California constitution, a charter amendment has, or the charter is amended the same way that, you have to use the same manner, so if it's, and it's also very clear that a charter amendment is by the electorate.
Okay. And similarly, if a, an ordinance initiative was put onto the ballot, language could be included in that that would give the council the authority to make changes, amend, or whatever?
Correct. It needs to be very specifically stated in the initiative before it goes to the voters so that they understand
Right.
what the parameters are that the council would have in changing that ordinance.
Okay, and you could also include things like, some level of changes could be by majority, but others have to be by supermajority. That could all be spelled out in an ordinance initiative?
Yes.
Okay. Let's see. So then, I had a question, and I asked staff, and it was answered, but it had to do with sort of currently how the right-to-lease ordinance and the rental dispute resolution program work together at the time of lease renewal and a rent increase in excess of the trigger. So what, what currently would be the process there?
So there, there, you kind of have to look at them separately and then see how they work side by side. The right-to-lease ordinance does not require a landlord to continue to rent to a particular tenant. If they're both willing parties and they want to continue in that relationship, then the landlord simply has to offer those two options of a written lease with a six-month term and a one-year term. The rental housing dispute resolution program provides that a landlord can raise the rent twice within a 12-month period unless the parties agree in writing to something different than that, twice a year. It also provides that a landlord cannot raise the rent more than 7.2% in a 12-month period. So if a landlord and tenant are in a relationship for longer than a year, 12 months, and in that 12-month period, the rate, the rental increase is greater than 7.2%, then the tenant could access the rental housing dispute resolution program to address the rent increase over that threshold.
Okay. And then, I seem to recall during that meeting where we were discussing all of this, was the situation, I guess it's in the exemption or something in the Costa-Hawkins Act that has to do with at the end of a tenancy, the landlord, well, I think you know what I'm saying?
I think you're talking about vacancy decontrol.
Right, right. So could you explain, explain that again?
So vacancy decontrol, and it was touched on as a part of the explanation of the charter amendment. It does allow the city to address rent increases when the vacancy changes over. So the city does have the ability to, to address that if they were going to regulate rents.
So, so I guess the question though is if that is a function of state law, so if, if a landlord sort of forces somebody out so that he can raise the rent, state law says, well, in that case though, you can't raise the rent to market rate? Is that the effect of that?
My understanding, and I haven't looked at it recently, but my understanding is, it allows the city to regulate that if it so desires. So that's one of the questions that was previously posed to the council. Do you want to include that? Do you want to be able to regulate rents? The concern at the time that was expressed is that landlord, a landlord might evict an existing tenant in order to be able to raise the rents. So is one way that council could have a tool to address that if it so desired.
And so what it does is, it doesn't say what the rent should be, but what it says is you can't raise the rent more than what it was when you do that.
I think something very similar to that, yes.
All right. I think, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Clark.
So while we're on that topic, you know, kind of related to, I think, what San Jose does, except they don't directly regulate, I think you have to send the letter and profess that you're not, you know, if you're evicting someone for no cause, you can't raise the rent. Do, do, would a charter amendment or the city through an ordinance have the ability to say, if you're going to evict someone for no cause, you, you can't raise the rent for the, under vacancy decontrol, despite vacancy decontrol, you can't, could we say that you can't raise the rent more than the last person was paying if you evict someone for no cause for the next tenant?
I don't see why you couldn't do that. You're, because you, you have the ability, if you were going to regulate rents, you have the ability to do that. I would have to look at particular language, but I do believe that that's within the purview of a city to regulate that.
Could you also, because what's in the charter amendment, I think, is, it also says that, you know, if, if, under certain circumstances, you would have to pay relocation or, or some sort of mitigating fee, could the city do that as well and basically say, you know, if you're evicting someone for, for no cause, you know, that person is covered under a certain tenant relocation provision?
We already do that. The city already does that within its tenant relocation ordinance. We've just chosen to include certain situations. So those are no, those are basically no-cause displacements.
But, but could you tie it to, to a noticing period? So say if you, if you give someone more than, if you give someone less than, you know, X number of days' notice, then you, then these provisions kick in?
That, that is something that legally I would need to do some further research on, in light of the fact that the state has really set forth what the noticing provisions are in the tenant landlord situat, relationship, and the state's occupied the field, and whether or not we can find a legally defensible argument to make that the city is not engaging in a preemptive.
Basically, it gets really tricky when you change noticing requirements.
It does.
Okay. And, and then I have a question for our presenters. So, the charter amendment's very, very well-written. One, one area that was a little bit nebulous to me was when it comes to costs. And so it creates, it creates this committee, and I guess the first is, this is, I'm sure this is in here and I just missed it, but, you know, we appoint someone for a four-year term. What happens if they're just misbehaving? Is there some way for us to remove that person within four years if they're just way out of line, one way or the other?
That's a really great question. I'm going to have to look at it. I don't, I believe you're not having, I've memorized most of the words in the charter amendment, but not every single word, so I actually don't know.
Yeah, I did a Ctrl+F, and I was looking for it. I'm sure it's, I'm sure it's in there, and I just need to read further, but I just wanted to know if you knew off the top of your head. That's okay, though. The, the other, the other is related to, to costs. So this committee, it was appointed by us, it has far more authority than any other appointing committee that we have today, even the appointing commission. And we have kind of no ability to, to control the decisions that they're making, including, you know, in terms of budgets. So the idea is that it, it funds itself through, through fees, but there's obviously going to be some interaction with staff, and there's going to be staff support. So does, is the intention that staff gets reimbursed for that? Or, you know, do we just pay out of pocket to support it? Because it also says it's an integral part of the city, so it kind of hints that we're ultimately financially on the hook for making sure they still exist in perpetuity.
Yeah. So there's a lot of, you're absolutely right that there are some unanswered questions like that in the language of the law. And I have to say, many of them are intentional because it is a charter amendment, and it's not right to, like, say how many FTEs, we don't want to put that in the charter, right? So the attempt in these, and this is much like the ones that are being considered, you know, this was worked on by a group of lawyers who have been working on these issues for a long time. The issue is to, the idea is to strike a balance between enough direction, but without hamstringing in the charter,
Right.
something that's too specific. So you do see big words about consistent with purposes of the act. The committee has authority to do that. Is it possible that the committee could do something or fail to do something, and someone might sue and say, you're not doing, yeah, of course, that's always possible. But I think in most cities, you know, some cities already have charter amendment rent stabilization or ordinances that look a lot like this, and it tends to work out. The concern about independence, I mean, I think it was a value of the coalition to have the rental committee have some autonomy from council, but nevertheless to work in partnership. Can I just add one other thing? You were talking about the vacancy decontrol and the Costa-Hawkins thing, and I just want to tell everyone, even though she doesn't have an official role, Melissa Morris is here because she knows an awful lot about rent stabilization and just cause throughout the Bay, and so if you have any questions that you think she might be able to answer, and I'll give you a hint, you might want to ask her about that.
If you want to clarify, we answer going in.
Yeah, I love you.
Thank you. So the city attorney is absolutely right that there is this carve-out in the Costa-Hawkins law that says cities may regulate the rents of new, for new tenancies where the prior tenant was evicted under Civil Code Section 1946.1, which is the state law that allows for no-cause evictions. And councilmember Clark is correct that that is part of San Jose's apartment rent ordinance.
My experience?
Okay, I'm still here. My experience in San Jose, and I've, I've been practicing housing law in San Jose for about 10 years, is that that particular piece of the ordinance is extremely ineffective. And part of the reason why is San Jose also currently has a complaint-based system. And if you think about it, for a complaint-based system that relies on either the current tenant knowing the past And if you think about it, for a complaint-based system that relies on either the current tenant knowing the past tenant's rent or the past tenant who is now elsewhere knowing the current tenant's rent is virtually impossible to enforce. And so just cause eviction, which is very clearly allowed under state law, cities are expressly authorized to enumerate the causes for eviction is a much cleaner and much more effective, cleaner from a legal standpoint and much more effective way to protect tenants from being given no-cause eviction notices simply because the landlord seeks to evade the purposes of rent control.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. First question for the city attorney. Is the supposed inflexibility of this measure based on pound and the pack that it's a charter amendment or based upon the fact that it's going for a vote of the people?
It's based on the fact that it's a charter amendment. You can only amend the charter at a regular statewide election. So that would be in every, even every year, every time we have a council election. That's the only time it could be, and it would have to be presented to the voters.
But if they, well, back in 1979, I wrote a condo conversion initiative, and it cannot be changed without a vote of the people, is my understanding. So an ordinance is also subject to that restriction, right?
Right. And the difference between the ordinance and the charter amendment is that the ordinance could contain language that would allow the council to amend the ordinance, but a charter amendment cannot.
Okay. So now my question for Ms. Broad. We have a number of initiatives that have been enacted for rent stabilization around the state. How do they deal with the issue of needing to make adjustments in their programs?
So I'll ask Melissa to help me supplement this answer. In my experience, the rules and regulations subcommittees of these rental bodies are actually quite robust sites of democracy where they really debate, given this broad language that the charter amendment or ordinance might have, that they really debate, how should, how should this be implemented, given the discretion that we have? Should we further give some guidance to give certainty where the charter amendment or the ordinance might be rather, still rather vague? So I can think of one example is, it's actually escaping my mind. I'm sorry, I forgot. I just know in East Palo Alto, for example, there were very robust rules and regulations committee meetings talking about certain pass-throughs and whether they were or were not consistent with the language of the underlying ordinance, which had been passed by the voters. And these were, you know, well-fought, you know, well-reasoned arguments on both sides that were trying to fill in some of those gaps.
My other question has to do with litigation. Some people have predicted that some of the landlord associates might possibly go to court to challenge certain elements of the charter amendment, and I tend to agree with that prediction. If somebody takes the measure to court over one of the elements, such as the October 19th base date, how does that affect the rest of the ordinance?
The charter amendment has specifically in it what's called a severability clause, which means that if any one provision of the charter amendment is held unlawful for whatever reason, unconstitutionality or other, that does not affect the legality of the balance of the charter amendment. So exactly the scenario that you're predicting, if someone were to sue over the rollback, that would not kill the whole charter amendment. If they were to prevail, which I don't think that they would, that would be severed. Severability is in the charter amendment. And if I may say, I mean, one of the things that this group of lawyers who's been working on this, including Melissa, I mean, anybody, if you can find a lawyer, which, you know, some people can, not everyone can, but if you can find a lawyer, you can file a lawsuit. And there's no way that the coalition can promise you that no one's going to sue you over this amendment. It's a, to some extent, a free country. But we have done, to some extent, right? But I think that the coalition has instructed us to write a, an amendment that is very, very secure. This is not going out there in terms of unconstitutionality and a taking. I mean, we are very familiar with the doctrine, and this charter amendment, you're going to be in a good position. Can I promise you they're not going to sue you? No. Can I promise you you're going to win? No, but I'm pretty sure you're going to win. This is very conventional rent stabilization stuff being upheld multiple times as perfectly constitutional.
Is there anything in the charter amendment, assuming it passes, that would prevent the council from amending, let's say, the tenant relocation ordinance?
No.
How about right to lease?
No.
Lenny, can I follow up on that?
Sure.
Because the charter amendment says it over, it destroys everything that we've done, supersedes everything that we've done relating to rent. So it would get rid of the rental housing dispute resolution program. It would get rid of the right to lease program and arguably could get rid of the tenant relocation ordinance. Because it says in its very act.
It specifically cross-references the tenant relocation ordinance, so I don't think it overrides that.
But it does the other two.
We might have to make some amendments to the existing tenant relocation to make sure it comports with the charter amendment. And then I do think it would be a policy call about whether the city wishes to continue the right to lease in light of, if the charter amendment were to pass. And then the rental housing dispute resolution program, whether or not that makes sense to have that or...
But that could still apply to some of the non-rent issues that they've been hearing.
Well, I don't think it could, because it says explicitly that it overrides any existing rental laws, so.
Well, my recollection of the rental dispute resolution ordinance is that it is not necessarily regulating rents in the sense of rent control. At least that's how it's framed, but providing an opportunity for mediation. So it may be that that's something that could be clarified, again, if the city council wanted.
1717A says supersedes any ordinance passed by the city council covering the area of rents or evictions.
I think I agree with Melissa more, I mean, I see your reading of it. I think, you know, give a lawyer a half an hour, we might be able to come up with something else.
Okay, I'm done for now.
Hi. Vice Mayor Rosenberg?
Yeah, thanks. So this goes to you guys. You briefly mentioned, I didn't understand during your presentation, you said that, these are my words, not yours, it can go away? The charter, how does that work?
So this charter amendment includes what we're calling a de-trigger mechanism.
Detrigger?
Detrigger, like pull the trigger. This unpulls the trigger. And what this, this is, this is the one thing in this charter amendment that I would say is unconventional and creative. And although it's been discussed among landlords and tenants, this is the only one that I know of that has, this is the only version of this law that has it in it. What it says is, if vacancy rate in the city, as measured by a certain measure, goes above 5%. Now, you could argue whether 5% is the best number, but it's an industry standard. It's considered sort of, a sort of okay proxy for a hot or a cold rental market. If vacancy rate goes above 5%, the rental housing committee can say, hey, we don't need this law anymore. Let's return to an unregulated market and see if we can keep this 5% vacancy rate works and the market will cool off. It's a way, it's a way of saying, we only, let's use this law when we need it. When you have conditions on the ground like we have right now, where you just have a market out of control. It's not a free market, it's a market out of control. If the market stabilizes, let's try and turn it off.
Okay.
So I just would like to point out a couple of things. One, it's the committee that chooses whether or not to suspend it. The language still remains in the charter and it's still effective. It's simply that the committee has the option, if those certain market conditions are met, to suspend the enforcement of those, of the program.
So you also mentioned that we are where we are today, the circumstances in other cities like Richmond. You chose, you specifically chose a charter amendment over an ordinance because of examples in other cities where they were sued successfully, I believe?
No, not that they were sued. No.
Please explain why you chose the charter amendment pass.
Yes, I apologize if that wasn't clear. I was feeling the pressure of the time and I raced through that part, but it was important. In the city of Richmond, if I understand, and Melissa can help me if I get the chronology a little bit detailed, the city council passed a robust rent tenant protection ordinance. It was repealed. The people then gathered signatures to put the rent stabilization ordinance on the ballot. If I understand it, I think that measure has qualified as an ordinance. But as soon as that measure was filed and the signature gathering commenced, another charter amendment was tendered and started gathering signatures. And that is a charter amendment called the Homeowners and Private Property Act, which, so in the questions, councilmember Casper's act was asking, if both of those pass, the now ordinance, voter-initiated ordinance, even if it were to succeed and the private property amendment were to pass, the charter, the charter amendment would trump and for all time, well, until they can amend the Richmond Charter again, there would be no possibility of rent stabilization down the road. So it was in, and if I can say, you should have a look at the Richmond Property Rights, it's very boilerplate. It's almost like on a Xerox piece of paper. It does, if I may, it doesn't reflect the kind of work that went into some of the other ones. And I think there was a legitimate concern that this was a playbook and that we were going to see anytime voters go for an ordinance that you're going to be met with this competing charter amendment. And the only way to preempt it.
So the issue that we're faced with tonight and the reason we're here is because it's a charter amendment. So if we, if the council decided tonight to take the exact verbiage, with the exception of charter amendment, and pass exactly the same thing, so obviously we'd have two competing ballot measures because you can't take yours off, would you support the concept of yes on this one, no on that one?
I can't see.
Because you get what you want.
I can't, well, you get what you want, subject to the council repealing it, you know, six weeks later when they change their mind. I mean, it's leaving it, if you put it in the hands of the council, that's the other downside. You know, there are other cities that are doing this as a charter amendment because frankly, city councils, this story in Mountain View is not unique. People are going to the ballot and for lots of different reasons, trying to put this in the charter. Again, I can't answer right now for the coalition, what would they do on absolutely competing, but I can't imagine that leaving it in the hand, putting it back in the hands of council, given everything that's happening, I don't think is in the cards.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember McAllister?
Yeah, thank you. Could we follow up more on the cost of the program? I was, on one section of your, let's go specific, then I can say. Section 1709, Article K. The committee shall be an integrated part of the city, but shall exercise its powers and duties under the article independent from the city council, city manager, city to accept it in the quest of the committee. And then over later on, under section 1714.
I'm sorry, what was the first one? K?
1709K.
1709K. Now we're going to 1714E. That you're going to have control over the city attorney to represent you. So, and I'm going to sort of tie, this is an example of, we have this committee. There's committee form. And if the rules aren't clear, the committee makes the rules, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So they all decide what the city attorney is going to do, correct? They have the power based on this.
I think the way this has worked in other cities is, and I think councilmember Clark was asking questions getting at this same issue, this does create a body of the city. I mean, there's no getting around it. And like all bodies of the city, the city attorney is tasked to represent it.
But I mean, to me, they seem competing or contradicting each other, so that's one of the questions that comes to my head. But the cost of the program, the committee decides what to charge, correct?
The committee sets the annual fee, yes.
So we have a non-elected body that can tax landlords, correct?
It's not a tax, it's a fee.
It's a fee, okay, a fee.
CF Obamacare.
So a non-elected body can charge fees for the city, and then the city collects those fees? So is that correct?
Yes.
And then the city, who collects the fees?
Well, the committee would have to establish, under the charter amendment, the committee has the power to administer the program broadly. And so they would have to set up, working collaboratively with the city, a mechanism to collect the fee. I agree with you, it's not spelled out in great detail. This is one of the areas where, like all the charter amendments, and many of the ordinances that have been in place for decades have this kind of structure, where the committee or the rent board or whatever you call it works hand in glove with the other features of the city bureaucracy.
So the rent control board could request the city to collect the fees and administer it. But let's say the city just doesn't have the staffing or the capabilities. So does that mean that if there comes to some court resolution that the city attorney would have to represent you, or not you, but the committee over the city? If they are, is the city attorney acting as the attorney for the committee?
I don't think I understand. I don't think I understand. We don't understand the question.
Well, you're asking, okay, in here, it says that...
It wouldn't be a separate legal entity. It would be part and parcel of the city, so.
Are you asking in the event of a conflict between the committee and the council?
Yes.
Yeah, it doesn't, I don't know. Ms. Quinn, do you have any thoughts on that?
The committee clearly has powers, but it would be under the umbrella of the city for purposes. It's not a separate legal entity. So it would be like the police department is really the city of Mountain View. It's not a separate legal entity.
I would ask the legal question. My understanding, the way it's worded, the city attorney and the city manager have no control over the committee or its functions. I have total control over the police department, so there is a distinction here.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get, okay.
I have something to add. You said the city would have to administer and this, and what if there was some staff and so on? The city is already collecting fees from landlords. This would simply be an addition, if necessary, to the fees that are being collected. So if the city has the staffing to collect fees now or whenever this comes into effect, the city would be able to do what would be required for the fees for this ordinance.
And that's, okay, I'll save that for comment, but that's, okay. The other question I have is, who determines a fair rate of return? Is that the committee again?
Yeah, the committee, and that's a great example, if I may, I don't mean to cut you off, so.
No, no, that's fine.
That's a great example of a place where the committee could tell us more in rules and regulations about how it's going to do so than is in the charter amendment itself. The charter amendment sets out some standards of what should be considered, factors that go to a fair rate of return, but it doesn't give a formula, for example. The committee could, consistent with the factors that are listed in the charter amendment, give, pass some rules saying, here's our methodology for determining fair rate of return. We don't want this to be arbitrary and capricious and just depending on the day. We want to tell you how we're going to figure this out and treat people, similarly situated people, the same and codify that in rules and regulations. But they're only broad factors and standards in the charter amendment.
So recently, the city of Mountain View passed an increase in trash and increase in water, four times the cost of CPI. Now, how would that be considered? Minimum wage has gone up 20, 30%, and it's going to go up even more as this time progresses. So how are those factors put in consideration, that the operating costs are going up and yet they can only, potentially can only go as high as the CPI?
So those are things that absolutely could be taken into account in any increase in the costs of operation and maintenance. I think there's a few things to keep in mind when you talk about the concept of fair return. First of all, for CPI-based rent control measures, most landlords will... most landlords will be able to make a fair return even if they are abiding by the annual allowable increase, without having to request an adjustment. And there's a few reasons for that. One is that about twenty-five percent of rental units turnover per year. So that means that, as we talked about with Costa-Hawkins, landlords can then raise rent to market. So average rents increase ten percent a year. So instead of increasing the rent by two point seven or three percent, they're increasing the rent by, say, ten percent or more. And so that means that their gross income is not just increasing by CPI, but is increasing by something more than CPI, or could, if they choose to increase their rents that way. And the other thing to keep in mind is that even though a lot of costs of operations and maintenance do go up or fluctuate over time, the single largest cost of operating rental property, which is property tax, is capped by Prop 13. And so that stays at or below two percent every year. And so costs are not necessarily fluctuating as much, total costs may not fluctuate as much as individual, as a single cost like garbage.
Do you have a personal idea of what a fair rate of return would be?
So there are a number of different formulas that allow for fair rate of return. The one that is used by many rent control ordinances for both rental properties like apartments and mobile home parks is called the Maintenance of Net Operating Income Methodology that essentially establishes a base year in which the landlord is making X amount of net income. And then there is an assumption that that net income should be allowed to increase by at least CPI, or the annual change in CPI, every year. And so if the landlord can show that in this year, their net operating income doesn't match that trajectory, that it's lower for some reason and that they need an adjustment in order to achieve their fair net operating income, then they can obtain it. And there's usually also a mechanism for appealing the base year if for some reason the base year is particularly low. Like in this year, they had unusually low rents. And that's one way that a lot of cities do it. It's kind of an objective methodology that could be adopted by the committee and it has the benefit of having been upheld by courts.
Again, a fair rate of return is the question of, we have a lot of fourteen thousand units. You said they're built before nineteen ninety-five and they're pretty old and potential remodeling. Under fair rate of return factors, yeah, under two C, you are saying the cost of plan or completed capital improvements to the rental units as distinguished from ordinary repair, replacement, and maintenance. But only such capital improvements are necessary to bring the property into compliance or maintain compliance with applicable local codes affecting health and safety. So what incentive, what would motivate a landlord to put in improvements that would bring it up to code if it's twenty years old, if they can only get again a rendered return of CPI?
Sorry, I just want to make sure I understand the question. Is it repairs that would bring it from not being in code compliance to code compliance? Or is it something that...
They were in compliance at the time it was built, and if, let's say it burnt down, there are new codes. So that's what I'm thinking of, is that, you know, they were built under one code, we have new current codes. And so that's the question I have for you. Is that a...
Or just remodeling.
Or remodeling. So if somebody wants to remodel it and they can only return so much money, do you think that will work as, that someone would do that?
So Juliette may be able to speak to this better, speak to the specific language better than I can, but the way I read it was that if you need to do it to bring it into compliance with code, then it does fall into the first category of things that can be considered. But if it is to make it more beautiful, say to improve the appearance of the building, it might not be included. However, it's important to remember that for landlords, because those types of capital improvements are business expenses, they're something that can be deducted from taxes.
Okay. But, so going along your train of thought there, is that you think a landlord would be willing to increase the property beyond what's absolutely minimum in appearance? Or you said, you know, if they have, improvements-wise, it's taken out Formica, maybe putting in Granite or anything like that?
So, I mean, so for the example of Formica and Granite, usually landlords do that when the unit is vacant. And since, remember, under vacancy decontrol, they can increase the rent-to-market rate for a new tenant, then they do have a financial incentive to make those changes to a particular unit. In terms of sort of the macro picture, there have been some empirical studies done, mostly on the East Coast, about rent control and the effect of rent control, specifically this type of more moderate rent control on the maintenance of rent-controlled versus non-rent-controlled properties. And they found that while there may be some variations in the aesthetics of those properties, the habitability of the properties is roughly equivalent for rent-controlled versus non-rent-controlled properties of the same age and type.
Okay. And I want to know one last question on decontrol, section seventeen eighteen. So this committee is empowered at its discretion in order to achieve the objectives of this article. So when you said that the committee can do it, they're not under no obligations to change anything in the program and they can do what they feel is appropriate?
Correct. It's not mandatory. They have the power, but not the duty. If, for example, they thought, this five percent, this isn't a good measure, I'm not persuaded. They could elect not to do it. And then, yeah.
Let's say we are in a real bad recession or something and costs are going way higher. Inflation, I guess, would go way high and exceeds five percent. So by this charter, they cannot exceed anything over five percent in rents?
I'm sorry, I want to make sure we're talking about the vacancy rate.
Okay, that's vacancy rates. They have, yeah.
Correct.
But the other question is, if for whatever reason rates, inflation or deflation or whatever came along, this board cannot go above five percent?
That's correct.
And if everything else is going ten percent, remember, and when interest rates were in the ten percent double digits, they'd still be only allowed to go to five percent?
They would only be able to go to five percent as the annual general adjustment, but they could petition for an upward adjustment to that if other market conditions were such that they could no longer make a fair rate of return. They could petition to depart upward.
Thank you.
Okay, right. So, any more questions?
Yeah.
Oh, Councilmember Casper there.
So just to follow up with what Councilmember Siegel was talking about, in the litigation context. So because it's a charter amendment, the council has no ability to really, can't settle anything. So literally, any litigation would have to go to final judgment of the court because only the court would be able to nullify any provisions. The council could not, for example, say, you know, you're probably right, we will remove the rental back provision to settle the lawsuit, and so that's correct, right?
I think that's correct. I mean, to be honest, I'm not an expert on like city, I mean, I would ask the city attorney to help play this hypo out collaboratively, but I think that's right. What do you think?
I think unless it's a provision, that's a regulation that the rent committee would have the ability to modify.
Well, but I mean, if we were getting sued on the amendment itself, I mean, I've done mediation of legislative actions and that is a common thing, is where the body will, you know, pull back or repeal a portion of the law, you know, to settle the lawsuit. But we would not have that ability.
Correct. And I guess I want to reiterate, you know, I'm not here to tell you there's no downsides to this being a charter amendment. Like, there are downsides. This is a...
And then the other question was, and it goes back...
How we wanted to go.
It goes back to the fundamental question. So right now, we've identified an issue. A rogue committee member does not appear to be removable. They do not answer to the city council other than by appointment. They do not appear to be subject to our rules of conduct. And so, I mean, they are autonomous once they're appointed, but that can't be changed unless we go back to the voters to have that corrected. Correct?
I'm not going to say that I think that's correct. I think that's a tricky legal issue and I don't want to commit, I wouldn't be surprised if this has come up and if there isn't a way to find other powers in the city, I'm just not going to comment on it. I do agree, there are going to be some, it's not impossible that there will be some problems like that. I'm not going to agree that that specifically is one of them. But again... Thanks, thanks, Julie. Okay, Councilmember Clark?
It's just one quick follow-up and then I promise to stop. So it was back to a question that Councilmember McAllister had asked, related to kind of reasonable rate of return. And you'd mentioned that one of the reasons that, you know, it works out in the end is vacancy decontrol. You can raise the rent for a new tenant. But hasn't someone made the, just the economics argument, that that is essentially the new tenant subsidizing the stabilization for the old tenant? And I get why that has some value, but you're effectively holding the rent below market and then the new person who comes in is sort of subsidizing the returns that would have been had there. And isn't that, I mean, I'm sure someone else would have asked it, but isn't that sort of discrimination in some way against...
Isn't vacancy decontrol discrimination? Something the landlords...
Well, if it's all, if it's all market rate return, then you, then everyone, I don't, I mean, these are just typical trade-offs, but I'm just, isn't that effectively what happens? Is in this scenario, is in order for the landlord to get a reasonable rate of return, it has to come from somewhere. In this case, we're just saying, new tenant, you're the one. You get the benefit of the stabilization in a few years, but, you know, you're saddled with kind of subsidizing the prior tenant.
So I think rational economic actors in this situation, and, you know, some landlords may say that they don't do this, and it may be true, but they'll charge what the market will bear. They will charge the maximum the market will bear, no more, no less. And so what the prior tenants are, what the prior tenant paid is not necessarily going to have a bearing on what the new tenant is being charged. There have been some economic studies done on sort of what happens to rents at the macro level because I think this argument has been made that somehow rent control will have the effect of increasing other rents. But it's been found to not be the case when you look at the, like, the city as a whole, for example.
Okay.
I think, may I add one thing? I think Councilwoman Clark asked an important question. And I think we need to look at the fact that of all of the rental units that have been built since nineteen ninety-five, this particular economic situation occurs all the time. There are no cause evictions or exceedingly high rent increases that the current tenant definitely cannot pay so that the tenant moves or is evicted in order for the landlord to raise the rents. That's not considered subsidizing?
So just one other thing to keep in mind is that rent stabilization is, it's intended to stabilize rents for in-place tenants. It's intended to allow people who live in the community now to be able to stay, to be able to continue in their jobs, for their kids to be able to continue in their schools. There are a lot of other things that the city can do, should do, and that Mountain View in a lot of ways is doing to deal with the issue of initial rents, like inclusionary housing, like housing impact fees and other local sources for affordable housing funding. This is a critical piece of a much larger puzzle because creating new housing is not going to prevent people who are being displaced now from being forced out of the community.
Okay. We've had a lot of council questions and answers. Thanks for, everybody for being so patient. So now we're coming to the public comment time. I know that we've been here for a couple of hours, but I still think it would be a good idea to start the public comment without a break because we have some young people here who want to speak. So I'm going to ask people, I'm going to ask to see a, please raise your hands if you'd like to speak. Okay. So I would respectfully request that we let the girls, let the kids go first because it's getting late for them and they probably want, they not want to stay. Does that seem... They need to queue up around that way, please. And also, I would like to request that everybody say your name and what town you're from. And everybody will have ninety seconds to speak.
We have two minutes.
No, you have ninety seconds. No, you have ninety seconds.
You have many seconds.
Ninety seconds tonight, thank you. Everybody will have ninety seconds. And, so, girls, can you see, the line's going to form around the back. Would you like to go first?
Yes, my name is Melissa Yanez, PhD, I guess, Dr. Yanez. I am from Los Altos Hills, California, born and raised. And I was on the phone with Esther Wajetsky last night at eleven PM and again at six AM. And then because of the chaos of all day, she was getting a statement from Susan. Her son, Susan, was the first person that helped us get the big grant that we got this year that basically our program is good for another while. We were the biggest award recipient from the Google Rise Program last year. Her grandson, Ari Tropur, who's Susan's son, was the very first volunteer who was teaching these kids. There are twenty kids from the other side of Silicon Valley, not the side that you are assuming that this side is from, who are teaching these kids. They are the four point four kids who have taken AP Computer Science. And they have statements on their Facebooks all summer long that they're stunned that these girls are picking up Java faster than, they're picking up Java programming. They're doing programming in Java faster, like in two days, what it took them a month or two months or a year to learn. These girls are not a gimmick. They're not a hashtag. They're not ever something that you've ever seen before. So I urge you to keep that in mind. This is not what you assume that it is. This is not a gimmick. We are operating right now out of Alta Vista High School in the auditorium. We invite you to come, we invite you to come visit us anytime in the next four, five days until the program ends and see these girls in action during the day coding because it's not anything you've ever seen before.
Okay, thank you. Time's up. All right, next speaker.
You can pull the mic off if you have to.
Can I push it down?
Also pull it off, too.
Hi, my name is Donna Almaral. My, I'm eleven years old. I am a student in Empoder. It's coding program. And I came here because mostly of my friends, like ten of my friends, had to leave because they had to go like three hours or four away because like they couldn't afford a home in here. And like, I don't see them like twice a year or like less. Also family members, also like don't, like, I can't see them like one week or less a year because like they live far away and like we're not really have that time to go for three hours or four away from here. So like, we live far away. So, yeah, and...
Next speaker. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Adriana Guerrero. I am twelve years old and I'm an incoming seventh grader. And I joined Empoder because I really, I'm really interested in computer science and I love coding. It relaxes me and it's really fun to do. And it's fun to see the last product. And I'm afraid that if I have to move, I won't be exposed to as much technology as I am. much technology as I am here, and I won't be exposed to as many programs like what Marissa is running, that are like free, and we get to learn languages of code. And I love like seeing the end result, it makes me really happy to see the end result of a program that I've worked really hard on, and I don't want to give that up, because it's really fun and it's something that I like to do and I don't want to give up.
Okay, I mean, the rest of the kids, this is chaotic for them, we, our day started at seven for people, eight AM, the parents, they've been, all, this has been a very, very traumatizing, chaotic day, but I please urge you to come visit us, the whole public, in fact. We're open, Alta Vista High School Auditorium, ten to six, come by and see what they're doing in action.
Thank you very much.
That's happening all over.
Okay, thank you very much. Next speaker.
I have some documents I need to deliver to you, especially to King Ken. These are documents establishing that there have been violations of the political format occurring by the council members here. Expect someone to do some kind of investigation on that. It's based on like that.
Sir, is this related to the item at hand?
Yes.
Okay, go back to the mic so we can all hear you.
Basically, during this whole situation regarding the housing issue, I basically did some discovery and found out that pretty much five of the seven members here had financial interests involved with maintaining the bubble of the real estate market in the city of Mountain View. And because of them now considering to try to pass the ordinance, I delivered this documentation that from their own handwriting establishes that they have had a conflict of interest ever since the beginning. So if you are going to propose another ballot initiative, be aware that there will be someone like me who will prosecute you for violations of the Political Reform Act of California, because under section, in this case, the specific section is, I believe, called eighty, eighty-seven hundred, eighty-seven one hundred, my apologies, it says it prohibits any public official from making, participating and making, or using his or her official position to influence the government decision.
Next speaker, please.
Now, I had some time to deliver the documents, so I should have, please.
That's part of the deal.
All right, fine.
Okay.
Linda Curtis. I would like to say that I've heard some very good commentary by our council, like if you're trying to comply with code versus remodel, but on the older homes that are affordable, things are just wearing out, and they're not totally gone, you can't consider it a repair, but you gotta do something, because it's falling apart, takes a lot of money, it's hard to always adjudicate and plan the money. What I see on my street, these are all older buildings, and I have the greatest diversity on my street, which I'd like to maintain, but I have seen more houses go up for sale and sell, and, and turnover on this street in the last few months, just two or three months, than I've seen in the forty-plus years I've lived there. Now, pursuing more than one master of science, I know you have unintended consequences, so I think it's certainly better to do a city ordinance instead of a charter amendment, so you can adjust it and tweak. And, and even more, more of a misinten, unintended consequence is, you put the older buildings just at risk of going under, people just have to quit, they're getting old, they can't do all the work themselves, they're way under market, they'll never come up, they're selling. And when they go, they'll build new, unaffordable stuff.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hi, everybody, I am Denise Smith. I understand and absolutely sympathize with the need for relief. However, rent control is too dangerous in the long run to be the answer. Economists say, and I am not an economist, but I don't believe that anybody on this whole panel or who has spoken tonight is, that the ceilings on rents actually limit quantity and quality of the housing available, that landlords will prefer short-term rentals inadvertently discriminating against the people it is trying to help. They say that rent control has, in certain Western countries, constituted maybe the worst example of poor planning by government, and the economists also say that in many cases rent control appears to be the most efficient technique presently known to destroy a city except for bombing. Rent control is not the answer. Adding the most low-cost supply possible is the answer. Removing the park in Lufy for owners who want to build companion units would encourage more units and affordable units. Allowing conversions of structures in non-conforming setbacks would encourage more supply. And regarding the East Coast study that was mentioned earlier, twenty-nine percent of rent control units tend to go under disrepair, while five percent of non-rent control units tend to be under disrepair. Thank you for your time.
You know, really, I, I've asked everybody not to clap, and the reason is because we want people to feel comfortable talking, and if you clap or you boo, then that inhibits people from saying what's on their mind. So, I know normally in American entertainment, we clap, but this is, this is a serious meeting, so please restrain yourself. Thank you.
My name is Catherine Green, I'm a resident of Mountain View, and I own a condo that I rent out. I'm also on the Homeowners Association of that condo committee, and I'm a Realtor. So, I am here to say thank you for having this meeting, so we can understand what this measure is about, and I don't have to, I, I'm grateful for the time and attention to this. And I had a few questions that I understand you may not be able to answer right now, but came up for me during the course of this presentation. Several references in the ballot measure were made in relation to median income and percentage of median income. I would like to know what the median income is for an individual or a family. My second question is, there were some exemptions to this entire ballot measure by state law, like single-family homes, condos, things built after ninety-five, but you also mentioned additional things that were exemptions, and I only caught the first two, granny units and duplexes, but it sounds like there were a couple more exceptions. And then the third one is, there's, there's some kind of mitigation. If someone is, is asked to leave their rental and they're not a problem tenant, what is the mitigation required of a landlord? Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, next speaker. And also, I just saw that you gave a blue card to the clerk. If you're somebody who speaks to us on a regular basis, we have your name, we know how to spell it, but if not, we'd like to get it correct in a minute, so please fill out a blue card, so that will happen. Thanks. You don't have to do it before you speak. After you speak.
Hi, my name is Angie, I have a nine-month-old daughter. I'm actually here for two reasons. One of them is her, my husband and I moved to this area to start a family. And since we've moved here, our rent has gone up several times, for no apparent reason, ten percent, five percent. This doesn't create a predictable life for a family, and families need predictability. So, that's the first reason that I'm here. And the second reason that I'm here is I also help to collect signatures. And I think I registered maybe five or six people, but one of the guys really stood out to me. It was a couple with another child the same age as mine. And the guy, he said he'd never registered to vote, he never wanted to vote, he could care less about what happens in politics. A lot of people feel that way. But he registered to vote that day because he cared that much about rent control, and I do not want him to go to the ballot and feel like his first experience in democracy is a confusion. So, that's, that's it.
Quick question. Angie, are you aware of our right to lease ordinance? You're entitled to a one-year lease?
I have a one-year lease. Our landlord was allowed to increase our rent substantially because they previously did not charge us for water.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jim, I represent a small grassroots group that we call Bay Area Homeowner Network, where a whole bunch of mompoms, we own, you know, duplexes, fourplexes, and things like that. And, you know, this is very timely, there's a news come out yesterday in NBC News, that there's a report that the apartment rate is going down, in San Jose it's going down eight percent, in Oakland it's going down eleven percent, you know, where are the inflection point, right? I remember back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, you know, we have the lower rent, and there's free rent sign all over the place just to attract people. So, I just want to remind that, that, you know, there's, we are at the inflection point and talk about unintended consequences, right? And it's very well documented, you know, San Francisco has the most strict rent control. As a result, there's thirty thousand unit, rentable unit that's sitting empty, because, you know, it doesn't make sense to rent them out, right? And as a result, that's really driven the rent, talking about the new, new, new people who want to rent, it's driving the rent up artificially. There's a lot of unintended consequences. So, you know, as a, you know, representing a bunch of small owners, I do support that we should make this, rather than a charter amendment, make it a city ordinance and alternative ballot, I strongly support it, thank you.
Hi, my name is Michael Khan, it's K-A-H-A-N, and I'm a Mountain View resident and homeowner. I'm here tonight partly because I'm also a parent and have heard concerns from my daughter about the displacement and the way that it's affecting her classrooms at Mountain View High School. And I'm here because I help to collect signatures for this measure. I was motivated enough to join with the tenant coalition, and I collected over two hundred signatures, going door-to-door, standing at the train station, going to public events, and I heard the need, as I met people, the, the real desperate need that people have for some kind of relief, for some kind of rent control, for some measure that will protect them. And I appreciate the council considering other ways that they might provide this relief, but I also want to say that it's really important to respect the work that was done by the hundreds of volunteers, the thousands of hours that were put in to collect those signatures, the thought and care that went into crafting this charter amendment. And I'm really concerned that this might be a simple ploy to try to undermine the efforts that have been made, because I think it's quite well documented that when two similar measures appear on a ballot, it really dooms both of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hello, I'm Chris Anglario here. As the tenants' coalition, you know where we stand, we wanted to stop everything and just let the charter amendment be voted by the people. As an individual, I can tell you that we spent some quality time during signature gathering efforts with some of those seventy-three hundred people. And personally, this is one area where I don't trust the council to make the right choice. I was involved in the candidate's forum years ago, when some of you were running, and we were talking about rent control then. We're having this conversation, this is a great conversation and a great opportunity for all of us to be educated, but this is actually what we're asking for, for a while, and you weren't able to give us that, a session study or a moratorium to, to, to come up with this issue. So our community took to do it themselves. I ask you please to respect their effort, our effort, and, and also another thing that I wanted to mention is that, given the kinds of questions that you will post, they were mostly related to landlord rights and your fear for being sued to the city. I didn't hear anyone really asking how this will help tenants and in what way, it was more about the landlord rights and about your fear. Don't act out of fear, this is a time to be brave and stand with us. If this doesn't work, we will, we will make another charter amendment and repeal it. We're good like that, we did it. So you don't tell us how hard this is, because we've done it, and we'll stand by your side, because we don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot.
Ms. Mayor, councilmembers, Laurie Voitella, Mountain View. I agree with the words of Linda Curtis and Denise, and Denise Smith. Wondering if you heard about the reserve in San Jose? It's over two hundred and seventy-four unit apartment place that has, it was in the news. It's been sold in, it's scheduled to be torn down, all the residents are displaced. Big developers are coming in and building new housing that's very expensive, all over the area. This leaves the middle and the lower class individuals unable to afford housing in this area, so please help them.
Hello, hello, my name Barbara Goodwin. I have been in this community for a long time. We should be grateful, the rent issue is being discussed, and discussed, and discussed, but the bright ray of sunshine. We do have a charter amendment, I was part of that, I collected signatures, and I collected a lot of stories. These, this charter amendment is interesting because these existing communities like Berkeley, Santa Monica, San Francisco, they have them, and they're doing pretty well, from all accounts. I haven't visited, I haven't talked with the people there, but I think it's a pretty good thing because the people are excited about it, and the council would have minimum input. I think it's something that, I, I don't want to see you muddy this issue with another issue regarding the ordinance. I would rather see the charter issue prevail. That's the end, that's all.
Next speaker.
Mike Fischetti, I'll be very, very brief. A year ago, when this started, I was concerned about low-income, low-wage earners, many Latino living in apartments who are being evicted. All during the year, listening to testimony and gathering signatures, I really begun to understand something else, that this is a very broad issue in the community. Talking to homeowners who want to be able to have their children and grandchildren live near them, talking to tech workers who would like to live in the community where they're working, talking to teachers, none of whom live around here, who would like to live in the community that they love, talking to firemen and policemen and city workers who would like to live in a safe community where there are good schools, talking to business owners who really want to be able to have people to help them keep their businesses alive who don't live in Tracy, and talking to seniors, and seniors are really scared, as you know, they are now the majority of the new people losing their homes, they're in favor. So this is like a very broad issue, and it represents so many people in the community, other than what you might have thought when we first came here. If you have seventy-three hundred people signed, that's twenty percent of the eligible voters. If you have a poll that says there are sixty-three percent of the people who are favorite, sixty-eight percent of the people who favor this, that's a lot of broad community support. So, you know where I stand in this, I do have a question that I hope gets answered. I thought the city attorney mentioned that if there were a ordinance and a charter, despite the number of votes, the charter would prevail. Thank you.
Next speaker.
My name is Asha Praver, I've been renting continuously in Mountain View since nineteen eighty-nine. My observation of this evening is that nothing is certain, anything in the political process is subject to difficulties, words can be interpreted in different ways. I've had a lot of different experiences in litigation and politics, and I understand all this. I've rarely seen such a conscientious effort on the part of these two women attorneys. They've thought through everything that can possibly be thought through, every question that you asked them was intelligently and honestly considered. I do not understand how we could do better. Also, you have seventy-three hundred people who Also, you have seventy-three hundred people who've signed this. You've had hundreds of people who've worked on it. You've actually mobilized a community to care about its community and to act, and to act in a way that has been very thoughtful and very fair. For you now, at the eleventh hour, after having had so many opportunities to act, to do something hastily in opposition to such a fine effort, that's hardly going to be a notable action on the part of any city council. You should applaud what they've done, say, "We're sorry, we didn't take action before." Now, good work, and then let's hope for the best. Thank you.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Gabriel Cardenas. I'm a community organizer with Working Partnerships in Silicon Valley Rising. We're a coalition of faith, labor, and community organizations fighting for Silicon Valley families, making sure they can actually live where they work. I'm from San Jose, and even though I'm from San Jose, I'm not unfamiliar with the inequities that happen in this city. I led an organizing campaign against Google Express. We went against a multi-billion-dollar company and we beat them. We have a strong, we're here to offer grassroots support to the underserved communities of Mountain View. We have a strong team of organizers talking to community residents and moving them to action. We're not going to stop knocking on doors. We're not going to stop making phone calls. Also, I wanted to congratulate the Mountain View's tenants coalition for all their hard work in getting this on the ballot. Si se puede.
Good evening, everybody. I graduated from Mountain View High School last year, and ever since then, I've realized how much relief my mom has had because she now lives in San Jose. And before, we used to live in a half-bedroom apartment for one-thousand-four-hundred every month, and I'm not sure if that's a lot to you guys, but it's a lot to her. She works two jobs and goes to school, and I didn't, you know, I didn't have the privilege to go to prom or any of these things because her money was going straight to rent. And I'm not here to give you a pity story. I'm here to say that the benefits here at Mountain View are the reason why she kept me at Mountain View High School. And fortunately, I've had mentors, I have scholarships. I'm very privileged to go to college because of this community. And I think it's important to remember that there's a broader, there's things broader than what we're focusing on, and there's a cycle that has been perpetuated by many things like this. And I think raising rent so dramatically all the time, because we experienced it too, really pushes away the middle and low class, which takes away a lot of opportunity to improve our community and this community as well. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Amy and I live in Mountain View. And I was really touched by the young girl coders. I think a lot of these Silicon Valley companies, they need women and they need minorities, and we need to keep these people in the community so they can have access to the mentors and eventually work for these companies. Without economic diversity, there is no innovation, no true innovation anyway. And seventy-three hundred, more than seventy-three hundred people have spoken. Let democracy do its work. Keep the charter amendment. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeff Dunn. I'm a Mountain View resident and landlord. And as a landlord, I've never raised my rents more than eight percent in a year. I've been a landlord for fifteen years now. And I think that, I've actually been an outlier, and I believe in some form of rent control. I think raising the rents thirty to forty percent a year is just a horrible thing to do and bad business. So, I'm not against rent control. However, this charter amendment concerns me for a couple of reasons. The seeming disallowance of capital improvement pass-throughs is one of the council members mentioning. I'm thinking electrical upgrades, you know, insurance companies are going to tell me. I can't affuses anymore. That's a multi-ten-thousand, tens of thousands of dollars in repair that I intend to do, I want to do, but it's going to make it very difficult if I can't pass through some of those costs. And also, the five percent cap regardless of the CPI. I lived through the eighties, double-digit inflation, you know. There are times when five percent isn't sufficient, and the CPI will show that. I think the restriction to CPI itself is questionable because of rising labor costs, et cetera, but capping at five percent is a huge issue. So, having a law instead of a charter amendment, I think is a good thing because these things can be tweaked. I think you will find these neighborhoods will deteriorate without some tweaks to some of these rules. And I don't think you can tweak them if it's a charter amendment. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Today, especially, I'm going to talk about my experience collecting signatures. First, I had to overcome my fears. Fears because when I opened the door, I was asked for signatures, I encountered people who weren't very friendly or who didn't agree with our cause. I had to stop cooking for my family several times. I had to stop doing fun things with my children. I did all these sacrifices because I felt I was committed to my community, because I wanted to hear our voice.
Hi, my name is Nora Beltran and I'm translating for Paula. Paula, her name is Paula Ramirez. She has been resident in Mountain View for sixteen years. Sixteen, yes. And the reason she got involved with this is because she was personally affected by the situation and by all the injustices. And in her communities, she witnessed a lot of people being displaced and a lot of people suffering all the consequences of the injustices of the rent increases. And she personally got involved with all of this, collecting the signatures with a lot of personal sacrifices. She sacrificed cooking her family in the evenings. She sacrificed spending quality time with her children in the evening. And she did a lot of personal sacrifices, and above everything, she had to conquer her own fears to go out in the community because she saw some people who were against what she was collecting signatures for. And it was really hard for her, but she also worked on a team for her community, to help her community and to help the other hundred volunteers who she saw. They all did enormous sacrifices to win this, to collect all of these signatures. So, she's asking you tonight to please don't come up with, to let the voters vote for the ballot, the initiative, and don't come up with another solution or another ordinance because they will confuse the voters. So, please consider all the efforts that all the volunteers did. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, I'm John Scarborough. I'm speaking for myself tonight. I've been lucky enough to get to know all of you, and I like you and I respect you. I've seen the hard work you've done on trying to help out people who are renting in town. And I've also seen the hard work of all the folks who are trying to do even more. And what I'm here to say is respectfully, the time has passed for doing things as an ordinance, and we need to have a vote on the charter amendment. If the vote goes down or up, you're still free to make more ordinances. And so, what I would do is just, as many people have said, go ahead and let the populace vote on the charter amendment. One thing I would like to bring up as an appointed, a member of an appointed committee, I don't think we have any rogues on the EPC, but I've seen the appointments that you guys have done. You're very careful, very deliberate, and I think that most likely, anyone we get in office will continue to do so. And just like we could get a rogue person elected in a elected body. I wouldn't say that, but that is possible, and that, I guess, is democracy. So, I would just encourage you to let the vote go. Thanks.
Next speaker.
Hi, thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to speak. I'm a small owner, operate in Sunnyvale. And the reason why I'm here, I really want to find out what the implementation at my nephew could impact to Sunnyvale. So, that's the reason why I'm here. But I just want to tell all the tenants here, pretty soon, you guys is going to have no place to stay. The reason, because this ordinance is only for the house built before 1995. What happened to those new buildings? We are the small owner here, and the reason why we increase our rent, just because we want to catch up so we can compete with those bigger units. And also, we have ability to have some amount of income to fix in our units. So, I can see, I've been kind of feel squeezed too by all the new building built, you know, after 1995. For two-bedroom apartment, they ran for three thousand, four thousand. Small potato like me in Sunnyvale, we only ran for two thousand. So, I have seen a lot of tenants, they are from San Jose, which is a city to be controlled as well. And then in Mountain View, they come to our unit and say, "How come your units only ran for two thousand?" And then we live in Mountain View, and now we are paying three thousand or four thousand. So, I just want to bring up this to all your people.
Thank you.
This is, you know, a concern.
Next speaker.
My name is Brooklyn Cook. I've lived in Mountain View for ten years and I love it here. And I have a little, have had a stake in almost everything. I used to be an apartment manager on Latham Street and worked for one of the biggest housing companies here and was disturbed when, and I'm not saying all apartment managers are like this or owners, but our owner, he made us call him every single time we got a new tenant with the old rent, the new rent, and the difference, and how much more he was making. And the greed was frightening, disturbing. And he owns a lot of, he owns probably half of Latham Street. So, I know, I don't think apartment managers are suffering by any of, like, having to update the apartments or anything. I mean, they're, they had tons, at least the ones that I worked for. More than that, more importantly than that, though, I'm concerned about education. I've been a teacher for ten years. I worked at Castro Elementary School as a teacher, and then I worked at Graham Middle School. At Castro, I was a fourth-grade teacher. At Graham, I was a special ed teacher and a computer science teacher. And I've worked, in my history, I've only worked in Mountain View and the schools for two years, but before that, I worked in LA in inner-city schools, in Washington DC in inner-city schools. And then I moved to Palo Alto and, in huge contrast, worked in Stanford. So, I've seen the disparity between low-income poverty schools and the high-income entitled schools, and the gap is getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And I was so happy when I came to Mountain View because there's finally a balance. And I really hope we keep that and don't drive the low-income kids out because to see them have access to these resources, a beautiful thing.
Good evening. My name is Katarina Blazek, and much has been made of the seventy-three hundred people who signed to get this on the ballot. I was one of them, and if I had known what the charter amendment was, I never would have signed. And I think a large proportion of the people who signed said, "Rent control is great, I'm going to sign," but had no idea of the consequences of it being a charter amendment as opposed to an ordinance. And I think that the crafters have put a lot of work into it, have thought a lot about the ideas, but I think they may have shot themselves in the foot. Because I think the fact that it is a charter ordinance, it will turn off a lot of people who otherwise, like me, would have supported the measure. But I feel that there are many measures in California that have been voted in by the voters, that we have no way of modifying them if something goes wrong. And there has been a lot of hand-waving and discussion tonight of things that are vaguely specified in the measure that will be up to the committee to work out later. And that's it, and I'm uncomfortable with that much hand-waving with an ordinance or with a measure that only the voters can change every two years. So, if something goes wrong, we have no way of fixing it. And so, I would urge, and I'm happy that the council has taken the time to explain this, the difference between an ordinance and a charter amendment, and that they have taken the time to think about it and present some alternative options for people like me who are sympathetic to the renters, but also want to make sure that we don't, that we don't do something that we will regret in the future. Thanks.
It's ten o'clock, and I think, how do people feel about taking a break?
How many more speakers?
How many more speakers do we have here?
Or you could close the line if you're not in line now.
We could stop right now.
Oh, okay. Let's listen. Go ahead. Mr. Reston.
Only three more.
Only three more.
In the late 1970s...
I'm going to close the line, guys. So, please, if you want to speak, get in line right now. Otherwise, we're out.
In the late 1970s, before most of you were here, there was an initiative petition to amend the city charter, which qualified for the ballot, and the incumbent city council members did not like it. The proposed amendment would limit city council membership to two consecutive terms. And so, what the city council did was to offer some other choices to voters. A one-term limit, a three-term limit, a no-term limit, put four questions on the ballot. And it was, of course, just a trick designed to defeat the two-term limit measure. That didn't work. Voters approved it anyway, but that was in days when we had separate city elections and people paid close attention. The suspicion here legitimately is that this pro-landlord city council, six of seven members endorsed by a landlord group as candidates, is just trying to defeat this measure by hook or crook. But I'll take a hard look myself at whatever you come up with and see if it's legitimate. Thanks so much.
Maria? Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So, as you know, we tried very hard just to extenuate all the venues, and we decided just embark in this very, very difficult process to create our own proposal. So, we know, we knew it was going to be very hard, but we were sure it was super very hard, was really a daunting experience. So, run a campaign, trying to collect signatures without money is not easy. It's almost impossible. And guess what? We did it. And we are so proud. I'm so proud to be between all these wonderful warriors, people who really give the soul just to get in front of all of you and be able to speak and let you know that we are here, we did it once, and believe me, we are going to do it again. Please, don't waste the people's money. It's going to be costly, just put another measure competing with the ones that the people already decided is good one. Many of you already agree, this is a very comprehensive, this is very fair. Don't waste your money. Don't waste more energy of the people. Respect the community and be with us. It's time. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Aaron, and I just want to say to the city council members, please do not interfere with the process. Let it go as it is. You guys did nothing when we asked you to do something to protect our community. So, now let people decide, give our community the opportunity to vote and decide without confusion. It was very hard to get the signatures. I came home very late from work and went out with my kids, knocking doors, trying to get those signatures. Some people were nice and polite, others were so rude. Believe me, it was very, it was a challenge, but it worth it. We get the seven-thousand-three-hundred signatures, so please let our community decide without. So, let them decide and vote on the next November election. So, thank you for your time. So thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name is Gail Nyhan. I've been a homeowner in Mountain View for over forty years. I'm a retired teacher. I've been a participant in gathering signatures, over a hundred myself. And I find this to be an inspiring process and a very positive process for our community. I see that people are participating at a level that maybe we have not seen. And I ask the council to respect this process. I know you've worked very hard. I respect all the time you give to these endless meetings that we've had. I feel like as a city, as a community, we have grown in our knowledge of each other. And I was amazed as I went to gather signatures in my neighborhood, which is the Questa Park neighborhood, door-to-door homeowners, condo owners, renters, the vast majority of people support this amendment. And they haven't all had an opportunity to sign it. I think it has a really good chance of passing. I respect the presentation by our Juliette, the coalition lawyer, and the other attorney. They have experience. They are trying to present a balanced program that will help our community. I value the economic and social diversity that we've always had in Mountain View. That's why I want to continue to live here. And I ask you to let the people vote in November. I ask you not to interfere with this process. Thank you very much.
Hello. Edie Keating, member of Faith in Action. I have really good news and you already know it. There are really wonderful people who live in Mountain View. I met a lot of them when I was signature gathering. And you should want them to stay living in Mountain View. I am curious, what are you going to do? Are you going to defeat rent control by passing rent control? Sounds a little strange. And frankly, it sounds very cynical. Collecting seven thousand signatures is inspirational. You should let that go to its logical conclusion as an unopposed ballot measure. Finally, I have a vision for two or four years from now. There are a few things that need to be amended, that council and tenants work together to come up with something they can both agree on for the next charter amendment. And we won't even have to collect signatures because council will put it on the ballot. Thank you. My conclusion is, please do nothing. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Hi, my name's Todd Nagin-Gast. I've been a Mountain View city resident for almost eighteen years now. And I have concerns about this ballot measure, but I think that it's important that the council continues to not do something to counteract what's been a democratic process so far. And well, I honestly think I'll probably vote against it. I don't think that it's appropriate to confuse the voters because, myself included, is to know what to vote for if you want something to happen. And so, you know, let's not do kind of the appropriate political, or the appropriate procedural thing to maybe make this go away. Let's actually respect the process that's happened so far with this initiative and let it be voted on without confusion. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Yes, my name's Steve Chandler. I've been a Mountain View rented, renter for fourteen years. And I want to ask the council to just respect what the coalition has done. They've collected signatures, means that it's going to be on the ballot. And don't interfere with that because it's unethical to employ where you're going to interfere with it. So just let the voters decide, you're supposed to represent the Mountain View voters, the Mountain View residents. So then, respect what they want. There's plenty of people that support this. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Quick question. How many of the people that signed the petitions that you got actually read the entire ordinance before they signed?
Well, see, I collected a lot of signatures myself and I never read the entire thing either.
Okay. Thank you.
Next speaker.
My name's Rob Holbrook. I'm a resident of Mountain View. Without getting into the merits of whether to run an ordinance or not, I'd like to observe that I think the spirit of the measure that is now going to go with voters and an ordinance, if you choose to provide one, would be improved by removing the clause that has a floor of two percent and a ceiling of five percent. There have been long periods over the last seventy years where the inflation rate has been both below two percent, a period of thirteen years from nineteen fifty-two to nineteen sixty-five. And again, above five percent from nineteen seventy-three to nineteen eighty-two, I believe. And if this measure requires us to go to the ballot to adjust that, to take this, to take this, the voters would adjust that, I think, I think that's a serious flaw. And if you put an ordinance in front of the people, I would hope that you would remove that flaw. The other thing is, I have read the measure in detail. And I don't see the basis for what the attorney claimed, which is that the committee has the authority to raise rents or to lower rents for people who have, who are below the CPI. If the CPI was, if they're, if they're being charged an amount that was below the CPI, I don't see the ability for the, for the committee to adjust that. In other words, if the, if there's a thirteen-year period where the CPI was below two percent, then I don't think there's redress in what I can see in the amendment for renters.
Last speaker. Last speaker.
Daniel DeWalt, here to speak as a resident of Mountain View. I have, I was born here in Mountain View. I have lived here, I've lived my whole life, a third generation resident. And, you know, it really occurred to me as I worked on this campaign, that if Mountain View had passed rent control in the late seventies, my life may have been quite different. It would have been quite a lot better, I think. Most of my extended family ended up moving away during the eighties because of the cost of housing here. And they all look back at the time that they lived in Mountain View as a pretty great time. They all miss it. And, you know, I, sometimes I wonder what it would be, have been like if they had been able to stay here and, you know, maybe I would have seen them more than just once or twice a year during the holidays. You know, I feel like this, that is why I'm working on this. I don't want to see people's families split apart because people can no longer stay here. They can't afford it. What we're asking for is totally reasonable. It's time-tested policy. And I feel like, I really agree with the woman in blue who spoke. I mean, I feel like we have worked very hard and if you do, if you do anything that would undermine our chances of success, I think that would be a terrible thing. I mean, I.
Thank you so much, Daniel. Okay, so we've had quite a bit of discussion and I, myself, need a break. So imagine everyone else does too. We're going to take a fifteen-minute break and we'll be back at just before ten thirty. Break's over. Time to go back to work, please. Please take your seat or if you want to talk, it's fine to go outside. So we've had the public comment. And now it's time to bring it back to the city council for deliberations. And I think we're going to just kind of systematically try and work through the city, the council questions. Does that seem appropriate to everyone or do, would people like to make some statement before you do that? You want to freelance? Okay.
Do you have a proposal, Mayor?
I had a recommendation at the beginning of the report, which was to, my recommendation, let me find it, was to put a council initiated, to talk and see if we could come up with a council-initiated ballot measure that would be equivalent to the, the Community Stabilization and Fair Rent Act, but wouldn't be a charter amendment and would include language to be able to be amended by the city council if it needed it. So that was my initial recommendation. And, but I also am a realist and I understand that that might not be something that enough council members share to do. And if not, I'm interested in talking about some of the other options as well. I, you know, as I've stated, I really do think that generally, the protections that are described in the ballot measure are basically sound. But I really would prefer a methodology that allowed easier amendment and rulemaking. So that's, that is what I stated in the, in the council-initiated report, which basically I wrote with some help, with some help. And I, but I have a tremendous amount of respect for the Mountain View Tenants Association. I mean, you really have put together a very comprehensive ordinance. It's very well organized. But I am concerned with the difficulty of amending it. So that's my position to start from and I'd like to hear others.
Mike always likes to start.
If I ask, I don't care.
Okay. Mike?
Okay, I'll go now. I'll go. So, I mean, I think the first question for us as a council is, do we want to do something or not? If a majority of the council says we don't, you know, we go home. We don't have to talk about anything else. You know, I, I think what the tenants' coalition did in all of their efforts has been outstanding. And to be honest, I didn't think they could do it and they did it. And I think it is now going to be up to the voters. I think with respect to something like this, and we haven't had this in Mountain View, I guess Len is the only guy that's been around up here that's been through, you know, initiative process. But I think you have to trust the voters. And I think if you trust the voters to do the right thing, you have to trust the right, the voters to do the right thing in all situations. And I don't think you can say, the voters know best, they'll vote for the right thing, but they're easily confused. There isn't, I fundamentally believe that this is a, a, I don't want to say bad because I like a lot of what's in it generally about how it will happen, even though I don't believe in rent control, because I don't think it is, I think it doesn't do what it's supposed to do. But the fact that it's a charter amendment cannot be modified. We've already identified issues just here that are of concern to me. And I just think, this is to me like making Obamacare a constitutional amendment to the United, of the United States Constitution. This, you don't do charter amendments for something this big and comprehensive. You know, the charter is our constitution. It is not, you know, sort of the laws of the city. And so I just fundamentally believe that it is inappropriate to do that. I do think, however, that the voters do want the ability to see if there is a way that they can provide some rental protections in the community. And I think it is incumbent upon us to give them an alternative, not to be sneaky, not to confuse them, but to give them an alternative, like the one member of the public spoke, is, you know, I don't want to be from the United Kingdom and look up what the EU was the day after I voted to leave the EU. And people very often do not read. Some people did read it, many people don't. And I don't want people after the fact saying, oh my God, I didn't have any idea. You know, and so there are two. And people can choose. If you want the constitution or the charter amendment, vote for the charter amendment. If we do an alternative, vote for the alternative. So I do support putting an alternative on the ballot. I think personally that it should reflect what the city attorney's office had originally drafted at the request of the council, which was the binding arbitration rental dispute program. I think we would have to come up with new percentages. I would like to see, personally, I would like to see that include so that it would be binding arbitration for pre-95, but still non-binding arbitration for post-95. So it still covers to some degree all of the housing in Mountain View because even the tenants' coalition's measure does not cover new, new apartment complexes. I would like to see language that it would be amendable by the council. I'm not certain whether amendable would include a statement that the council may not deviate from the original intent of the measure, i.e., we couldn't rescind it. Or maybe it could only be rescinded by a super majority of the council, but other technical changes could be made by a simple majority. I think it should include banking, whether it's, you know, you just, but maybe it's a little, little lower percent. And somewhere, there's got to be some of the vacancy de-control in it, in my mind. Now, we're going to have to get way more lockdown on that to give the city attorney direction if the council wants to do something. But I think just taking the, the ordinance that was proposed, well, that is going to be on the ballot and just turn that into a, an ordinance, I think to me is too complicated. It's still too complicated and that's really confusing. I think it's easier to do something that's simpler, easier to operate, easier to understand and easier for the voters to really figure out which, which they want. Or neither. I mean, voters still can vote yes to all, yes to one or the other, or no to all.
Okay. Anyone else interested in speaking?
Can I, it's more a question and I'll probably have comments too, but would your proposal, would we wrap it together with, you know, we've already passed, right, we kind of did this in a piecemeal fashion. We had right to lease and we had the mediation program. And could something that went to the voters wrap all of that into a comprehensive package so that we're not doing with separate pieces of legislation? Or does that complicate? I'm just wondering if there's some way to just to wrap what already has been passed in and, you know, add, add whatever additional provisions.
Tenant relocation also, would that be part of it, Chris?
I think tenant relocation touches so many different things that, because it affects more development than, I mean, it could, there could be aspects of the tenant relocation provisions that would fit here, you know, for evictions without cause, that sort of thing. But I'm just wondering if it's possible to wrap everything into one without jeopardizing, without risking what we'd already done. So for example, if the, if the, if what's on the ballot goes down, would, would what we'd already passed still be in place? Because I wouldn't want to lose those protections.
I think you have two different ways to handle that. One is to propose something that's, you know, standalone and incorporate those provisions or to wait and see what happens in the election and come back and address what, because those programs exist as an ordinance, you're free to amend those anytime you want.
I see.
And so we could amend those later. And I do think depending on what you are interested in doing, you might want to reconsider some of those provisions and whether they make sense any longer. For example, whether the written lease.
Right.
Makes sense as it's currently composed, given what would exist either under a charter amendment or any ordinance that you would come up with.
Okay.
And frankly, given the short amount of time, that's probably the easier way to do it since it already exists as an ordinance is to, for me to come back with those later as opposed to trying to come up with whatever direction you might provide this evening and incorporate that into.
Yeah. And if I, in my concept is things like the right to lease stays in existence because to me, that is a fundamental.
to me that is a fundamental protection. And we're really sort of building on the rental housing or the rental dispute program by adding the binding arbitration instead of the
Yeah.
or in addition to the, to bind, non-binding.
And I should just say at the outset, I, what we're doing here tonight, whether we do nothing or, or something, I think all of us have tremendous respect for the amount of effort that went into this. Uh, you know, ju, not just drafting this, but putting that, getting that number of signatures together in a short period of time is, is, is really impressive. I think the reason we're here is that I think any council, whether it's us or someone else, takes charter amendments very, very seriously. And I would hope that we would be sitting here if, if the landlords put a charter amendment on, or if any other interest group put a charter amendment on, I would hope that we would at least have a discussion about it. Because as Mike mentioned, the charter really is kind of the city's constitution, and it should be amended very sparingly. And, and, you know, if the voters decide to do it, then, then that's fine. But I think it's important that we all have a thorough discussion about it, because it is a, it is a very serious matter. It's, it's there and it can only be repealed every, or changed every two years with the majority vote of the voters. And so that, that's, um, I, I just wanted to get that out there. That this whole process means no disrespect to anyone. I think we're all very impressed by what's going on. It's just that this, this had, this affects the city for a very, you know, in a great way, for, or in a, in a big way for a long time.
So Chris, what do you want to do? What do you, what do you want to vote on right now, if anything?
For, for question one, does, do you, are you interested in placing something else on the ballot?
I'm interested in hearing what the, what that would look like. Um, and I, you know, I, I agree with Mike that if, if, if I were to consider something, it shouldn't just be a ploy where, I mean, we've already found, um, some things in, in the charter amendment that I think we would want to modify, and we only have four weeks. And so I don't think it's fair to set, to say, Janie, go back and make some suggestions for how to fix the charter amendment and putting that in place. I think, I think the, the right way to start would be what we had already talked about, and that is, um, or talked about in the sense of, or discussed before, and that is the, the ordinance that Janie had brought to us prior as a, as a basis. And then being able to make modific, you know, modify that however we sit, see fit. And, but I think in doing this, whatever we come up with, I think as many of us as, if, if we go forward with this, what, whatever we do, we should all, as many of us as possible kind of rally behind that, because I would hate to see, if we do put something on, I wouldn't want vote to fail. I, I think that's the, the worst case scenario for everyone. I would like to see something really strong that a lot of us would be willing to rally behind, and I would really hate for it to be, you know, a razor-thin vote, um, that sort of thing. I think it should be something that we really feel good about, and if, and if we don't feel good about it, then we, we probably shouldn't do it.
Vice Mayor Rosenberg?
Sure. Fifteen different thoughts all competing for supremacy. I don't know which one to say first. Um, you know, you, you said to us twice that legislating is hard. You said that to us twice now. Campaigning is harder. And if you think for a moment that your job is over, it's just begun. It has just begun, because the forces that are going to come pouring at you, you haven't seen the lights of yet. So.
The world.
So, you know, there was, there, I'm going to comment on a, a few different things. Forgive my stream of consciousness. There were, there was some, some comments from the public. I heard, it's a ploy. I heard it's cynical. And so I was taking notes and I wrote, it's a cynical political ploy. Because this doesn't feel like policies as much as it feels like politics to me. Right? This is, this is, we didn't pass rent control. We passed some, we called it rent control light, or whatever we called it with, with our rental housing dispute ordinance. That's not really rent control. I'm not in favor of rent control. I continue to believe that rent control is, is bad policy. What this meeting tonight is doing to us, it's asking us to say, hey, let's put something on the ballot that's stronger than anything else we've put forth yet and agreed to vote on, and put it to the voters. And then we have a scenario where we have two. And you have to say, vote yes on A, but not B. Because if you're, if the, if the council's going to put something on the ballot, we have to support it. And by definition, we're not supporting the work of our residents. So I'm conflicted here, because I don't want rent control in Mountain View. I certainly don't want it to be a charter amendment, because I don't think that's wise in almost any scenario. And so for me, it would be the smartest thing to do to confuse the voters by putting a competing measure on the ballot. But democracy trumps policy. And you guys did the hard work, so I'm going to let you campaign and see if you can get it to work. Now you may be campaigning against me and other people who don't like it, so your job's going to be tough. But I don't agree with that we should be putting anything on the ballot, because we already have something on the ballot.
Okay. All right. A council member?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Seig.
Yeah. You've been kind of quiet tonight.
But I, I know. Last week, we received the survey results for vehicle dwellers in Mountain View, who people who parked on the Chrysanto and lay them on other streets. Fifty-nine percent of them said the primary reason they were living in vehicles and in recreational vehicles was rent increases. That's what this is about. It's about, not about what we're going to do in the long run to solve the Silicon Valley housing crisis. It's about what we're going to do to address displacement. And I'm prepared, I've been prepared to debate Ken or anybody else as this measure goes on the ballot, whether it's good policy. And we've debated it here in the council, and I'm happy to debate it. There are good arguments on both sides, but, you know, I've cast my lot with support for the measure. The tenants coalition waited and waited and waited to see if the council would take action. I was surprised, they left themselves a very narrow window of, uh, in which to collect signatures. They waited until we voted down binding arbitration. They have no reason to believe that a city council, this one or a future council, will act in their interests. As Mr. Wesley has pointed out many times, um, most of the members of the council have been supported by landlord groups. I don't know what they feel about Pat at this point.
Nobody likes me at this point.
Yeah, you, you, you go to the, the annual conference of the Apartment Owners Association, and it's clear that year in, year out, they're working in the state legislature in every municipal election in the area to try to make sure that rent control doesn't happen. And so the tenants have a good reason not to trust the council. But if the issue here is simply that the ballot measure isn't flexible, and we don't really know how the staff will integrate with city staff, I'm willing to see us not put something on the ballot. But if you really believe that those are the problems, to enact an ordinance ourselves. That we would enact an ordinance based upon their measure, uh, but we would direct staff to, to, to solve the problem of how we get rid of rogue committee members, um, if that's really, I, I don't, I'm not sure that's a problem, but, you know, our city manager's, managing the city, he's asked concerns about how he would manage this program. And I'm willing to include that. I'm willing to include flexibility, uh, the ability to amend if we enact it as an ordinance. But I do believe that putting two measures on the ballot, where, let's say there's support for rent controls, let's say two-thirds of the population, maybe we get forty percent for one and thirty percent for another, they'd both go down. It's not plurality, it's, you need a majority to enact it. So it's not that I think the voters are stupid in this country and that we have two wonderful presidential candidates. You know, it's that these things do get confusing. I don't know how you would tell somebody, vote for this one and not the other, or vote for both. I expect people to be suspicious of people who've consistently opposed rent control, say, uh, all of a sudden we were for a measure. So, so I'm very much against putting a measure on. But if we're really concerned, that our problem's really our flexibility of administration, then let's enact, you know, we can't enact it tonight, but direct staff to come back with an ordinance. And then the tenants coalition can say, that's not good enough, it's too flexible, and they can still campaign for their measure. But that would be the consistent thing for us to do, if we're, if those are our concerns. But putting, again, a second ballot measure on is going to confuse the voters, it's going to, I guarantee it will, I almost guarantee that it will both, it will go down to defeat, although I would continue to argue for the one that I find superior. One of the reasons I think that resident voters will have a hard time sorting through everything is that I went through one of these camp, actually, two of these campaigns a long time ago. Back in nineteen eighty-one, the landlord spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a campaign against a rent control measure that, that I was one of the sponsors of. And they would argue to one group, you should oppose this because it's Tuesday, and another group, you should oppose it because it's Wednesday. They'll pull out whatever arguments, they'll have more mailers than Mark Birman. And you know how that confused the voters. So, so I, you know, I'm willing to consider, you know, and, you know, again, what we end up with will determine how we'll actually vote if we direct staff to do something. Something that maintains just cause eviction as an integral part of an ordinance and uses the same numbers, CPI and two to five percent in bracket. If we do that, then we're honoring the people who circulated the petitions, but addressing the issues that the mayor laid out. The alternative is for us to, to not take action tonight, see what happens, see what happens at the ballot, and then decide what to do next. I'm also willing to look, to do that. But, uh, again, I understand that most of my colleagues are against any form of rent control, and rather than confusing the voters by proposing something that you don't really support, um, let's either change your minds and enact something, or we'll argue it out in November.
Mike here. Are you finished? Okay. Thank you. I'd like to, to go along with whatever the rest of the council has said, is that we do admire your determination and the effort that you put into getting this valid measure on. It was a tremendous effort, and for those who campaigned before, you just amped it up so much more than when we go door to door. You did a, a great service. And I applaud you for it, and can't take any way from you. The spirit of the, and the valid measure, uh, I have a lot of sympathy for and agreement with. But you say you show seven thousand, seventy-three hundred people, but in Mountain View, there's seventy-seven thousand. And it's our job to represent everybody with a fair valid measure or any type of ordinance, so that when we make our governing decision, it's fair. And everybody's made comments about, well, you've had the, the landlords supporting you. Well, we've also had the bicycle, you know, Safe Mountain View go after and ask us to do things. I mean, there's always a special interest group. This is a special interest group, and so when you demonize one group and say yours is better, that's not fair. We represent the whole city, and we listen to every group that comes through us, and we try to give us a fair education. The, the, one of the only members here in the council that, as I mentioned before, has the signature on front of a paycheck, I know the struggle as a small businessman of trying to get workers to come to work in Mountain View. And I see it more and more, and when I first got on council, it wasn't that obvious to me. But now that I've had families work for me and people had to move, I'm much more aware of the situation, and I agree that we need to do something. And we need to do it fair, and we, again, we need to let the, the constituents decide. Many of you use the phrase democracy, as it was just one-sided, that we did this, we're entitled to it, stop democracy, because this is us. We've worked hard, we've earned it, don't do anything else. But I think democracy is to have a full hearing and let the public decide. If that's our job, if we see this amendment and there's something that we don't feel is appropriate, or is flawed, or weak, and that we put something on there, that's also democracy. We, as a council, were elected to make sure that we represent everyone and the laws that we implement are fair, and that's what we're doing here. If we go and put something on the ballot measure that we feel is a better policy, and that's our job, that's why we're elected, then so be it. But please don't use democracy so easily as, we have it and you can't do it. That offends me as an American to say that. You have every right to voice, we have our right to voice, the landowners have a right to voice, Safe Mountain View has a right to voice, everybody has it. And so don't limit a group just because you worked hard. And I do admire that what you did. So don't take it wrong that you don't deserve it, but I think we have more to do. Concerning this ballot measure, as I mentioned, I would like to see something on the measure. It's not to confuse people, but it's to clarify an issue. Again, something that I think would be better policy. I think the idea of tenant relocation, the binding arbitration are good. I don't particularly care for or support CPI. I think everybody would like certainty. I think a amount like five percent set, as San Jose has done, would be a fair amount. They've done a lot of research to it, but again, it gives everybody certainty what will take place. It has, is there a board or something along that line? Then they know that this is a benchmark, and we work from there. Tenants know what would be coming up, landlords know what to expect. Binding arbitration, I think, will be a fair way to get a balance, compromise, and that's one of our jobs, is usually to get a compromise. Tenants want certainty. Tenants want to make sure that their rents are stable, so do landlords. They want to be able to get a fair return. And that's why I was asking sometimes about a fair return of investment, and it's important. Because there was a, as I mentioned earlier throughout this entire discussion, and I applaud, again, you people, the tenants association, tenants coalition, said, we spent a lot of hours. Council spent a lot of hours working on this. City staff has worked a lot of hours discussing this. This started over a year ago. So do not discredit what we've done and a lot of the time that we've put into it. Because everybody's, but CPI to me is not one of the best ways to determine things. And I'm sort of, I want to go back to the fourteen thousand units that are pre nineteen ninety-five, and I'm concerned that if something comes along where the landlords do not have the funds to keep those properties safe, occupyable, decent living for people, then it could go down. There was a study, and I'll just reference this, it was in the, uh, it was in the Town Prior this weekend. It says, "Local Realtors Learn Effects of Rent Control." And everybody likes studies, and so here's Christopher Palmer, professor at UC Berkeley, talking about what happened in Cambridge. And he said, "From nineteen seventy through nineteen seventy-four, rental units in Cambridge that were built prior to nineteen sixty-nine were subject to a rent control ordinance that capped rent increases and restricted the removal of units from rental stock." Some of them were some of them. Their ordinance was imposed to solve an affordable problem, which we're doing. Palmer found that while it kept rents low, the Cambridge rent control ordinance reduced the quality and quantity of available housing. He explained the mismatch between those who could secure enough rent-controlled apartments and those who needed most. Rent control pushed rents even higher in non-controlled units and produced an inefficient low turnover, he said. Because landlords cannot raise rents, it killed incentives to make improvements to rental rental units. And I'm sure other groups can come along and say, "Well, we have another study that says it works." But as a businessman, if someone's lived here, I know that if you can't get the money to do it, you're not going to improve it. So I'm going to cut to chase and say, "Here's what I like to see. I like to see an alternative on the ballot. I like to see it capped at 5% rent. I like to see binding arbitration. And I like to see a modified clause of just cause eviction." So I think those are some of the three things that the tenants were looking for, was certainty. They want to make sure that they, the rents control, that they have just cause. And that's what I'd like to see potentially in an ordinance.
Okay, so you're talking about building on the ordinance that was in the March 15th packet?
Right.
Okay. All right. So I took a little tally here, and it looks like we have four. Question one is, does the council want to place an alternative measure on the ballot? Basically, we had four people who say, "We want to think about it and talk about it, see what we can come up with," and two who said, "No." So the answer to question one is yes. So now we go to, do we want to have an ordinance version of the Community Stabilization and Fair Rent Act? That was 2A. Or, as people have been talking about, does the council want to augment, bring back and improve the mediation, the rent housing dispute resolution ordinance that was originally presented to us in March last year?
This year.
This year, excuse me, this year, yeah. So I'd like to hear some discussion on those two questions, please.
I guess I'd like to understand, and maybe since John spoke after me, why, if you believe something is good policy, given our role as policymakers, you wouldn't want to enact an ordinance as opposed to putting it on the ballot where many of us believe it would be confusing? Are you proposing that we put what you think is bad policy on the ballot? Or why wouldn't you just enact it? I mean, as we considered earlier this year, and five people voted against it.
So I mean, I can tell you why I believe this. So I've talked to some other people. Won't come as any surprise that there has been polling on these issues. And the voters want to do something. The voters also, according to these polls, don't care what we've done. They want to take control. So we could do an ordinance, and the ballot, and the charter amendment would still pass, which would then mean the ordinance goes out the window because it supersedes anything. So to me, my responsibility to the community is, from my perspective, is to prevent a charter amendment from getting enacted, because I just think it's wrong for the city as a whole. And so by having a rent control ordinance that would be on the ballot, that voters could vote for, and enact a rent control ordinance, hopefully in opposition to the charter amendment, is something that I think works better for the voters than having an ordinance.
But you don't believe in it because you didn't pass it before.
So, but here's the thing. And you know what? You're right. And necessity is the, necessity is the mother of invention. Just because I don't believe in rent control, am I willing to just sit down and let something happen in this city that I think is fundamentally bad policy for the city? And that is to have a complex charter amendment that cannot be modified, except by another expensive election, become the law because I didn't want to do something? My responsibility is to the city as a whole.
Right, but you're not done. Your job isn't only on the dais. Your job is, if you see something that you think is fundamentally wrong, fight against it. Don't confuse the voter with an alternative that you don't even believe in in the first place. So this is, this is the existential problem that we're faced with, with this meeting tonight. If we didn't have this meeting tonight, we can, we could just simply, if we didn't believe the charter amendment was a good idea, which sounds like most of us don't, we would fight against it. We would write articles to the, to the letters, to the editor and so forth, and we would make sure that people are aware, and we would join the campaign to defeat it, because we don't believe in it. But if you didn't believe on Monday, something, I mean, I give a lot of credit, from a political perspective, of what the tenants' coalition has done. They are making you try to do something that you don't want to do. That's awesome.
Well, actually, I would have to disagree with you. I've been trying to get you guys to go along with this for months, and you haven't been willing to. So I, I mean, I, you know, I've, I-
But why wouldn't you do it as an ordinance ourselves? Why would you prefer putting it on the ballot?
I guess, I think that there's questions about how respectful we are to the process. I personally think that giving the voters the option is, is more respectful to the process.
If we adopt an ordinance, and then we still have the charter amendment on the ballot, the voters do have the option of accepting our ordinance or voting for the charter amendment. They still have that option, and it's a much clearer option than trying to distinguish between two long, you know, with all due respect, Janey's draft was very long and complicated, too, and most people aren't going to read the whole thing, and most people aren't going to understand all the details either. So why, I mean, passing an ordinance still leaves it up to the voters.
How does it leave it up to the voters? They're not voting on it. Unless you put it on the ballot.
They either let it stand, or vote for the charter amendment.
But this way, we have both in front of them, and then they can make an informed decision. If we pass an ordinance now, they will not really have an understanding of what we're doing. But if we put it on a ballot measure and put it side by side, then we need to trust the voters to make the informed decision of what's appropriate to them, and then they decide. And that's not, and that's what democracy is about.
I haven't seen the polls, but my guess is 30 to 40% of the population, of the voters in Mountain View, are likely to vote against any form of rent control. I don't see how with two measures, either's going to pass.
Well, that's the voters to decide, Lynn.
You can let the voters decide without putting a second measure on the ballot. I see it, you know, I understand, as a business owner, what your concerns are about rent control. And Ken's position, I understand. He's prepared to argue against the charter amendment. But if you're against rent control, putting something on the ballot that you really don't think is that great, but you're willing to go along with because the voters might defeat both, that's not what this should be about.
I think your fundamental, I think where I strongly, strongly disagree with you is that we would put something on the ballot to try and tank both of them. If I'm going to vote to put something else on the ballot, I am going to campaign and say, "This is the, if you believe that we need additional protections, this is the option to go with." And I really honestly hope that, you know, if you believe that this should go forward, that you should choose this option. And to get back to your, to your earlier question, I still have serious reservations about binding arbitration and setting, and setting rents. But I'm willing, I have reservations about enacting that as an ordinance. You know, that, I'm not going to just flip on that. I am willing, as a policymaker, to go to the voters and ask, you know, maybe, maybe I'm out of alignment with the electorate, and maybe, maybe they're willing to go this extra step that I'm not. And if that's the case, then so be it. I'll respect their will. But if this situation were flipped, if we were Richmond, and we had just passed rent control, and, and the landlords vigorously went out and did exactly what you've done, did a signature campaign, granted, less grassroots, probably paid signature gatherers and all that, I would hope that we would be sitting here and talking about how we were going to stop a charter amendment from undoing what we feel is best for the city. And so I feel a fundamental obligation to at least make sure the voters understand and have an alternative for a good policy, a sound policy option. And maybe, maybe they, maybe they choose the more, the more radical version, but I, as a council member, I'm charged with looking out for the long-term health of the city. And it really, really, it would really bother me if I sat here and did nothing to allow what I believe is, is, is something that is flawed to be enshrined in our constitution. It would be one thing if it were going to the voters and it were something that could be modified over time. But this is something that I really strongly feel that the voters need some guidance from, they need some other option. And maybe, maybe it's do not, I don't know.
Would you oppose this measure if it were not a charter amendment, but were an initiative ordinance that likewise could not be changed, except for a vote of the people?
Would I, would I oppose it in November, or would I oppose it, would I try and put something on the ballot to stop it?
I mean, I'm just trying to understand, is your problem that it's a charter amendment, or a problem that it takes a vote of the people to change it?
Well, they're the same thing. Amendable for me.
The condo conversion ordinance, which we passed in 1979, could not be modified. Now, we had an escape clause, which finally kicked in many decades later, but that was not a charter amendment, but it could not be modified by the council.
To answer your question, if what they put forward was an ordinance, even if it said the council can't touch it for X number of years, I wouldn't try and offer an alternative on the ballot. I would probably campaign against it, because I still believe it's bad policy. But I, but the reason that I have such trouble with this is not that they're asking the question of, "Are these provisions reasonable?" I might vote against it if it were before me, and I might campaign against it. But the fact that this is a charter amendment, this is a really serious issue to me. And I think that's its fundamental flaw. And I think, I think because of that, the voters deserve an alternative, or, or, yeah.
Well, I would like to counter that. For me, it really is about the ability to amend it. And I would, I would be upset about the lack of an ability to amend it if it were an ordinance that was on the ballot as well. Because I think, for the most part, that has the same implications. I was really glad, frankly, to hear one of the, one of the people share their vision and say, "Well, our vision is that two years from now, if there have been unintended consequences identified, that this council would put a charter amendment on the, you know, on the ballot." I suppose that's a possibility. But I really feel like, at this point, we would really like to avoid that necessity. And the way to avoid that necessity is to put something that is very similar in the quantity of protection it provides onto the ballot, and to do it now.
And how in that, let's sit around to your next question. How in that language would you prevent a council that's hostile to rent control from simply enacting 7.2%, amending it to make the rental cap 7.2% and basically making the-
By a super majority.
Well, I also thought that it might be possible to put something in there about saying that it couldn't be amended for two years, except for administrative purposes, so that we would have a chance to, we would have, at least this council pretty much would be, would be different. You know, the people that are on it would be quite different. But you're right. That is, that is a risk. And I, I see that that, that's one of the risks with this.
I have a question for the city manager. Mr. City Manager, we have to put this on the ballot, and the city pays for it. How much is that going to cost the city?
The staff report has a preliminary estimate of about $58,000. We've since, actually, since this was drafted, we've got an updated estimate from the county register of about $75,000. But I want to be very clear, we will not know the exact amount. Rumor has it, every time we ask, we'll get a different estimate. But even beyond that, we won't know the exact amount until after the election, and they bill us. But it's somewhere in the 60 to 80 thousand.
So if council decides tonight, and I'm looking at my colleagues, my esteemed colleagues to my left, to put an alternative ballot measure on, we're looking at least 2X, twice that amount.
Correct.
And that amount every time there's an amendment.
Right. We all understand the reason the charter amendment's a bad idea. I'm simply arguing that, you know, putting something else on the ballot isn't necessarily a better alternative to fight it. We can fight it without doing this and say 75,000.
But Ken, Ken- That's not what the polling says.
The council, people elected us to make decisions, to give them guidance. Your approach is, "Well, here it is, you decide," not giving them an option. It sounds like the-
That's not true, John.
Republicans, and no offense to any Republicans out there, as they're opposed to anything, they don't come up with an, you know, a proposition. And that's what we're doing. We're giving people a choice. We feel this is, it's not, it's bad policy in many regards. We're giving you something that we think is good policy, and we want you to make the decision.
The same survey said that the citizens of Mountain View trust our judgment. So if you, if you think that they trust our judgment, pass the ordinance tonight.
And then they still want, okay, but then we're not giving them protection. We're giving them both the option to do the vote, and we're increasing the protection with binding arbitration, potentially cap on the CPI and other potential other things. So we're giving them an option to let them decide. Your approach is, "Nothing."
You're just saying, "You guys decide."
And if it's not, and let's say it fails, then where are we, Ken?
Where are we on right now?
No, we're not, because we'll pass something that's even stronger than we've done in the past. We will give them more protection.
Only if they pass that. You're assuming, you're assuming one passes and the other fails.
No, but if theirs doesn't pass, then what do we have, Ken?
We have what we have now.
Which is weak.
It is weak.
But we're proposing something stronger.
Why do we vote on something stronger then? I don't get it.
But we're proposing, but we're giving the citizens a choice, and that's where-
Okay, well, there's four of you guys, go ahead.
Okay, all right. So we have question one. Now we are at question two, and I'm going to ask for a strong motion about one of these things. Is anyone ready?
So I mean, I think, I think the question at this point is, do, are we generally in favor of either beefing up what Janey did in March, or trying to convert the tenants' coalition? I'm in favor of-
Okay.
So I mean, I would, the strong motion would be, is a base to do, beef up what Janey worked on in March. And I'm not going to get into specifics, we'll, we'll figure out those.
But we'll get away from 7.2.
Yes.
Yes, and the truth is, the two, we could be in favor of either of them. I mean, I personally-
Right. But I'm, I mean, you wanted the strong vote to see what we're going to discuss. I'm sort of making the strong motion that we go with-
2B.
Yeah, I guess it's 2B.
I would feel a lot more comfortable with that, just because it's been vetted, and we're not starting from scratch with 4. We'll not start from scratch. You have a base there, but trying to make a lot of modifications in 4.
We have an excellent base there.
Yeah, we do.
We do.
But I think a lot more changes than we would have to make with, with the base that we've already worked on.
Well, the, okay. So let's, let's just see a show of hands about who would be interested in having the, the, I'm with 2B. Show of hands, who's interested in that.
Are you including the two people that don't want to do this?
Yeah.
Because that ends up 3 to 3, probably.
Okay. Well, so we have a strong motion to continue the discussion with the, with strengthening the rental housing dispute resolution ordinance by adding binding arbitration, changing the trigger, and including some discussion of just cause eviction.
And including non-binding arbitration for post 95.
Okay. So how-
Yes.
In favor?
I'm okay with that.
You're okay with that? Okay.
How about a separate measure for non-binding arbitration for post 95? Putting that on the ballot as a separate item.
For what? We've already passed that.
That's already in our ordinance.
Just, I'm sorry, just cause eviction for, for post 95. You're bringing in post 95, you're further muddling the issue. We can do stuff.
It's already the ordinance. Our ordinance already does that.
Not just cause of-
Not just cause eviction. We're talking about the post ninety-five, the, the rent increase mediation.
I mean, to me, you're just, you're just, it's a Christmas tree and you're adding ornaments to, to make it shine better for people, but there are things we could have done anyhow.
Well, I think we're, we're trying to get to that point to make it better.
So I guess, I guess, here's, let me, can I ask a fundamental question? Are you guys going to oppose everything that we try and do so we're going to end up stalemated and we won't get anything done?
Well, we'll get four two.
There's four votes.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying, but right now I'm not certain Pat wants to do two B, so then it becomes three, three, so we can't go anywhere. So we're stalemated.
Well, I, I would, um, I do prefer the two A. So I'm going to ask for a strong motion. Are, are there other people who are interested in putting together an ordinance version that includes language that would allow the city council to, um, to amend it? The reason I like that is because I think that it, it is more respectful of the effort that the tenants' association has gone to. And it essentially gets rid of what I think is a real flaw with the system. Um, and, uh, so is there any other interest in that?
So, is this as a ballot measure or?
Yes.
Okay, no.
Yeah, is there any, I, I, go?
It, it, you, it would include the provisions like CPI and, and not deviating from those particular things.
It would be, it would be in ordinance.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, no, okay.
I'd rather just.
Well, I would have preferred that. Okay, so we're going forward with the discussion about, um, two B then. Um, uh, and what are the, the, since we've come to that discussion, the next phase is to provide, um, clear direction to the city staff so that they can, um, draft this up and we will move to vote on it August ninth. Um, so I've written down a couple of things that I think we need to come to a conclusion on. Um, one of them is the trigger provision. What would trigger the arbitration? And, um, you know, arbitration, not arbitration, what would trigger mediation? What would trigger process? And to me, we don't want to have a particularly high bar for going and mediating. Uh, I think that, um, you know, it should be easy for them. Uh, it should be relatively easy if people feel strongly enough about it to go forward. So I think we should go forward with the, um, the proposal that is in the Community Stabilization and Fair Rent Act, which is to be, have it between two and five percent and to be decided on annually. And I guess if we didn't have a rent board, the city council would have to make that decision. But that would be my suggestion.
I've, and I've mentioned before, the CPI doesn't reflect the costs of doing business.
Are you suggesting that in what would be voted on, that the voters would approve kind of a range? That the council, is that what you're saying, as opposed to a fixed percentage?
And we would, we would make that decision based on the CPI, information such as the CPI.
See, I think that makes it confusing. I mean, that, that is the sort of thing, I think. I mean, it's just like, well, what, so what is the rate? Is it two, is it three, is it four, whatever they decide. I think a stated, you know, percentage is, is, is the cap, is the trigger, is, is a simpler, simpler rate. It's less confusing.
Everybody knows.
Well, everybody would know every year when they, when we made that decision.
What do you think the regular renter would know? How would they know?
Be published, be published in the newspaper. I think if I was a renter, I'd sure look for it.
I only, I, I liked the concept at first and then I remembered back to how we came up with seven point two and that was, that was probably the worst policy discussion that this council has had.
That was really bad.
And to have that, that was just embarrassment. Let's just be honest, and to have that every year, I don't know.
If I could interject for a second, Madam Mayor, if, when you're saying the range, do you want to model it on the tenants' provision, which is a range, but it's set, it's a set number based on CPI with a floor and a ceiling is different than the council every year picking a number between two and five. So you, you can do it either way, but if you wanted to model their methodology, it is a set number based on hard data, it just has a floor and a cap versus you making a determination.
Okay, yeah, that, that would be fine. I was thinking that, that the rent board in theirs had to make the decision, but I guess that you're right, it doesn't. It's, it's.
They make the decision about if somebody comes in and wants an extra rent increase.
Yeah, no, I think it should be the same as what's in the, um, the Community Stabilization and Fair Rent Act. I think that's a, I think it's a good process.
I mean, I, I'm, I could go with the council member, Calis, on the five percent.
I must say that if, if you adopt five percent, it'll kind of be like the seven point two percent and the, the voters will have more clarity as to exactly what you're trying to do.
Okay, all right, yeah, I, I really think five percent is, is too high.
It's not more than. It's not what? Sorry.
I mean, all the five percent does is say, "You have the right to have a mediation." That is, um, if the C, if the CPI, for instance, the CPI the last few years has been, um, on the order of one or two percent, right?
Two and a half.
Two and a half, two point four. Um, it, it, it has, um, I guess I'm thinking of the national one, yeah. The Bay Area one. Um, that's well below the five. And we are in a, you know, a boom economy. I, I just think it's.
But Madam Mayor, we, why didn't we raise trash only CPI? Why didn't we raise water only CPI?
Because that was raised based on our understanding of what those costs were. Those are cost recovery programs and they were strictly, what are the costs? And that's how the costs penciled out.
And same with the landlord, they have costs and the costs.
Yeah, and most of their costs are frozen.
Their costs aren't frozen.
They have a mortgage and they're paying, just like a homeowner, and they have Prop thirteen, property taxes. They are, they, their cost of business does not go up unless they start speculating and trading properties like some do and think they're entitled to make their money.
My costs are constantly going up. My working comp goes up, commodities are going up.
Yeah, and, and, and I, my business is a nonprofit.
And so I have to raise prices to cover my margin just to stay in business. So when you say.
But you have to pay more for ice cream, you, you don't own your property.
And you know, and then, and then the communities next door aren't seeing, you know, they're not paying as much. So, but that's the cost of doing business.
The cost of doing business for a landlord doesn't go up the same way it does for.
Yes, it does.
A food service business.
It, so he has a maintenance principal, wages are going up, so that goes up. And you think they're only going up two percent?
The overall costs.
The overall costs are going up, they're sporadic.
Because the mortgage is fixed.
So we're not talking about the mortgage, we're talking about the operating.
The largest part of their business is paying for the property.
Okay.
You know, the other thing, and some of the, some of the people who spoke tonight. John, you see it from the point of view of, of a businessman. How about the people that we've met who, whose wages aren't, are barely going up, who can't afford to live here? Um, why is it always that you're, you're worried about how much the landlord's making? We have lots, we've heard from lots and lots of people, they can't afford to live where they've been living with, with, with the kind of rent increases. Why, why is it?
I'm not looking at the landlord, I'm thinking of something that's fair, that they can get a fair return and it's low enough that people can afford.
The Constitution says they need fair return.
If you go out there on the streets, you will see help wanted signs all along there. And if you say, "I'll give you eleven dollars," next door, the guy's going to say, "I'll give you thirteen." So I can tell you from personal experiences that salaries are going above minimum wage because it's so hard to find people, except that the employment is so low, you have to pay more money.
And on that sal, on that salary, how many people can afford rent in this town on eleven or thirteen dollars an hour? Do you have any idea?
What are we talking, is that, the minimum wage is not really designed for people to have it for. But I'm saying wages are going up because of the demand that people need paid for. So, but I do have concern, that's why I'm looking for something fair. So is it two percent? I'm still looking, but to make sure that these properties are qualified and people have a decent place to live. You know, before it's ten percent, we're holding it at five. So is that really that much between two and five?
Actually, it wasn't even ten percent, it was unfettered.
Yeah.
So I, I also think, so one, having the five percent, it does differentiate this from the charter amendment. And it, it actually gives the voters a bit of a clearer choice of, okay, now you're confusing me. One is the, eh, sort of the same. So, I mean, to be different, uh, does, and it, again, it is one lower than what we have right now in just the mediation, which was lower than we've ever had, so.
Councilmember Casper Zach, the people in my community are really smart. They are not going to have any trouble telling these two apart. They're, they're going to have to look at it and they're going to have to read it, but they're not going to have any trouble, they're really smart. So I don't think that's a good, I mean, you know, I don't think confusing the voters is a, um, uh, I, I don't think that's a, a good argument.
But do you agree that it might divide the support for rent control?
What?
Pat? That by having two measures, um, even, even if every, every voter understands the, the two measures absolutely, don't you think having two measures will divide, you know, will have three groups? One that's against all rent control, one that's for one and one that's for the other?
I don't want to keep having the argument about having this on the ballot or not. Lenny, I'm sorry, I know you, you're trying to drive that. Four people have said, "Let's see if we can come up with an alternative." I don't want to keep going back to personally, I'm not going to engage in that discussion anymore. So if you want to have it, fine, I don't want to have that anymore. Four people have said, "Let's try."
I was responding to the mayor's comment about whether voters are confused and it's being collectively confused as opposed to individually confused is the point I was trying to make.
I, I really think that, uh, um, you know, the California, the ballots we normally have, um, do require effort and, uh.
Especially this one.
Especially this one. Whether, whether, whether you're dealing with this, this initiative or others. This, this ballot is going to be, um, quite, uh, quite, um, comprehensive. Lots and lots of things are on it. People are going to have to do some homework. That said, you know, to me, all politics is local. Um, really, we should probably all be starting at the bottom of our ballots, you know, which is where this is going to be. This and the, and the property tax bond and the, the, um, this, the, the sales tax measure. Uh, th, those are things that, um, uh, we really should all be looking at really carefully. And, um, I, I don't know, I just think that the California ballot is fundamentally confusing. But I think that, um, uh, people rise above it and, and master the things that are important to them. And certainly, a ballot initiative on rent control in their city or differing ones, that's something people are going to concentrate on. So I, I really don't see this argument. Um, and the other thing I have to say is, I'm not a political scientist. You know, I'm an, I'm an environmental engineer. And, um, so this in a sense is a bit out of my depth. From, from my point of view, I can see people voting yes on both. I can see people voting for one or the other. I mean, I can see people voting no on both. Um, so I, I, um, you know, it could be that this is just something I personally don't have a lot of knowledge in, but I, I think that, um, if the community feels that, that, uh, rent protections are very important, and I think we do, um, I, I, I think that people can honestly say which are the best ones and not, and, and it can work.
Well, do you want to continue with some of the other ends you want to put on?
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank, another one I have here is binding arbitration.
Yes.
Uh, everyone is thumbs up on binding arbitration?
I think what, I think if we're going to put something on the ballot, whatever it has to be, should be stronger than, than what we have today.
Yeah.
Even, even if I have reservations about it. I mean, I, I think there's no point in asking.
Okay, so the binding arbitration, Jenny, put that down.
Cost, do, can I, can I ask for a clarification? Mike had mentioned earlier, uh, binding arbitration for, in accordance with the Costa-Hawkins Act, but then non-binding arbitration for those units that were, received a certificate of occupancy after February first, nineteen ninety-five?
So we don't shelve the stuff, the protections for newer housing stuff?
It's, it remains, what we have remains.
Yeah. Um, and cost recovery is another issue. Um, I think we had cost recovery in, in it already.
Wasn't our cost recovery also going to be an educational tool too? So, yeah, I thought we had a broad one.
Okay, so, and then the other, the next one would.
The way Jenny sort of did that.
Oh, sorry. So keep, keep the cost recovery?
Yes.
We may end up, based on estimates, I don't think that'd be ready for August ninth, but if it, but that's a separate resolution for the, for the fee, if we have to do any adjustments to that.
We have the estimate before, we want to.
Yeah, it would be cost recovery, but that would be part of the annual fee schedule.
Yeah. Okay, um, then another item is just cause eviction. Um, I think that we've heard loud and clear from people that it is a vital component of, um, rent protections. And so I think that we do need to have some, uh, language related to just cause eviction included.
So this, this is where I was sort of asking the questions about, uh, because in my mind, the right to lease ordinance stays in effect. And so if you're somebody that's on a six-month or a one-year lease during the term of your lease, you effectively have just cause eviction because you have a binding contract. And you cannot be evicted unless you violate the terms of your lease. Okay, so for that group of people, and it doesn't have anything to do with the term of, at the end of the term, but during the period of their lease, they do have just cause eviction because of our ordinance. Now, that does not, there is no protection for somebody that chooses to be on a month-to-month lease right now. Somebody says, "I, oh, you have a right to a month, a, a lease, but I don't want one, I want to go month-to-month." Okay, then you would have no lease protection like that. So that is a problem. But it also might be something that then gets people to say, "Oh geez, at least I've got that extra protection." I'll, it may be an incentive then for more people to do the six-month lease or a one-year lease.
But what happens when the lease expires?
Well, so that's the next thing. And that goes into the vacancy de-control issue because right now, you still have that one five percent, or, or whatever the percentage is, that would be subject to arbitration. And if they tried to force the person out, then we would have that vacancy de-control. So that is a possible option, I'm not saying I'm opposed to anything else. I don't know what other options are, but there, there may be a way to craft it sort of in the paradigm that we have already.
Does, city attorney DeSantis, they have an ordinance that was somewhat modified or that, uh?
Well, they've just gone through a very extensive, year-long process to update their ordinance. I, I.
We're so much better, we're going to do it in three and a half weeks.
And so do they have a thing that is similar to just cause for the notification of the tenants or so that at the end of the lease that you just can't big somebody?
Maybe Melissa knows, if you want to ask her.
Well, I'm asking the city attorney.
Jenny's looking at that.
Well, you know, they, they had a prior ordinance and I haven't reviewed that in the context of, of the new ordinance. But there, there, at least there was a specific provision that altered the notice provision depending on whether or not the landlord was willing to participate in arbitration.
Well, how would a notice stop somebody from being evicted just because?
It just provides more notice to the tenant and gives the tenant the opportunity to go through arbitration.
Oh, okay, so it gives them more time to say, "Yeah, you're going to be evicted, I'm not giving you a reason, so I have a time to determine, to fight it." Is that what you're saying?
I, I think so, but to be, to be honest with you, given. I, I think so, but to be, to be honest with you, given how this was all prepared, I've not studied San Jose's ordinance since we, since March in detail. So I'm a little uncertain on some of the, I'm, I'm, I would like.
So right now, somebody has a 60, the landlord gives 60-day notice.
If they've been there a year.
If they've been there a year, then I'm not going to extend your lease. Within those 60 days, that gives somebody the opportunity to go out and challenge this eviction. Can they challenge eviction and say, hey, he's not giving me a reason?
Under, under San Jose's ordinance?
No, under ours.
Well, anybody's right.
Well, ours has, it, it has, it's part of the rental housing dispute resolution program currently. If there, if there's a dispute over a 30 and a 60-day notice. And as we heard earlier, we've already had some, at least conciliations and mediations on that point.
So then when the people, the tenant coalition says, we need just cause, no one just gets a notice at the end and says, you're out, right? Yep, today, boom, you're out?
Under, under California law, you can give, you can give tenants a 30 or 60-day notice with no reason for it. That you don't have to provide a reason for the, it's a, it's a notice terminating the lease. And as long as you provide 30 days' notice if they've been there less than a year, and 60 days' notice if they've been there longer than a year, you don't have to specify a cause for the eviction. And I'm sure if I've said that incorrectly, there are people in the room that can put me on the, the right track. And that's, that's the whole, the whole issue about just cause eviction. That it, that, that requires the landlord to actually explain to you why you're being evicted.
And you know what San Jose's doing?
So the existing San Jose ordinance, the, the one that's been in existence for quite some time, requires for no cause evictions, uh, either, so if the tenant has been there for less than a year, only 30 days' notice. If the tenant has been there for more than a year, then 60 days' notice with offer to arbitrate, or 90 days' notice. And the landlord has the option to choose between the two. San Jose City Council voted to change some of the eviction protections and to enact some new protections in the form of an anti-retaliation protection ordinance that would provide just cause eviction protections, but only for a small subset of tenants who have complained to code enforcement about code violations and whose complaints have been substantiated. That ordinance has not been drafted yet. It's, uh, set to come back to council sometime in the next many months. Um, but it's, it's not yet on the books.
But for the just cause, they, did they put something in or they didn't put something in? Did they, so I give you a 60-day notice to leave, no reason. Did they do any other further protection for San Jose?
So, and it, so other than the protections that I just mentioned, no. So San Jose does not have just cause protection for all tenants or all tenants in rent control properties.
Well, have you heard examples where someone got a 60-day notice and without reason, and they didn't arbitrate or go to try to figure out why? Do they have the opportunity to go or get a resolve?
So in San Jose, tenants can get either a 60-day notice with offer to arbitrate or a 90-day notice. Most of the notices I've seen coming from landlords in San Jose who abide by the terms of the rent control ordinance, give the 90-day notice. And so the tenant doesn't, doesn't receive an offer to arbitrate, um, but.
That's not part of their code?
That isn't the, that is.
Um, but in answer to your question about do tenants get no cause eviction notices every single day? Many, many tenants every single day.
And they have the window of opportunity to challenge it?
No. There, there is no basis on which to challenge.
That's why we want the just cause eviction.
Exactly.
Okay, well, we have, uh, go ahead.
The, the way that I think about this is, so there, there are two reservations I have about just cause evictions, and I'll share both of them because not everyone shares both of them. The, the first is, you own a four flex. You've rented to someone for, you've had a six-month lease or a one-month lease for someone. You, you decide, you decide as the landlord that, you know, I, um, and with just cause eviction, you're pretty much obligated to rent to them for as long as they want to, to keep offering them a lease unless you have, unless they haven't paid the rent, they broke the rules. You have to have a good reason for it. But you're sort of stuck with them, you're obligated to rent to that same person in, in perpetuity unless there's a break. So some, I, the typical, um, argument against that would be like, you know, it's, I'm the landlord, it's my place. Why should I have to rent to you instead of someone else in perpetuity? But that, that's one argument, not everyone buys that, but that's one of them. The, the other kind of longer-term issue that we've seen in San Francisco and elsewhere with just cause evictions is that the, the unintended consequence is that it, it actually promotes gentrification in the long term. Not in the short term. But in the long term, what happens is, if you're that landlord and, um, you've been, you, you're, you're pretty much forced to rent to whomever you, you start renting to, um, unless you have a really good reason not to. So then as the landlord, what are you going to do? You're going to get pickier about who you let in. So you're going to, you're going to make the rules of the apartment complex stricter so you have more ability to get out if they break the, the rules. You're going to do more onerous credit checks than you would have otherwise. You're going to require a higher income threshold to come in. And so what that does over the long term is it actually, um, it brings in people kind of from higher income brackets. And it actually accelerates, I have people done studies on this, it accelerates gentrification long-term, not in the short term. You're, you're certainly protecting those who are already there. But that's the, that's the real kind of Achilles' heel of just cause evictions for me. And so I think what we're trying to get at and what I agree with trying to stop is someone who, who evicts you for no reason, just so they can increase the rent, vacancy de-control, they can increase the rent for the next person. Like, you're a perfectly fine tenant, but I, I really, I hate this whole 2.5 or 5% thing and I, I'd really like to bring things back up to market. So I'm just going to let you go, 60-day notice, see you later, no reason. What you can do in that case, and what San Jose does, but not very effectively, as you very well pointed out, is, um, so they say that, well, if you're going to evict someone for no cause, then you have to write a letter to the city saying, um, you know, I'm evicting someone for no cause, I promise not to raise the rent on the next person. And the next person probably has no idea that, um, you know, what the rent was before, they wouldn't have any idea. What you could do, um, and what I might suggest, is that for any no cause, um, not, not say you can't evict someone for, you can't end a relationship for no cause. But if you do, um, one, you should, even though it's legally tenuous, you should probably do a 90-day notice. You should give a longer notice. Um, and if you don't, then it should trigger a mediation. Um, but that's a little legally tenuous. So San Jose hasn't been challenged, um, but that's one thing. The other is, you could require that every, every eviction notice, um, for cause or not for cause, a copy of that go to the city. And so then we, we know, um, we, we have that in our records. And if we want, we can send that apartment unit a note, um, three months later saying, hey, we just wanted to let you know the person before you was, um, was let go for no cause. Um, here's what that person's rent was. And by the way, if you're being charged more than that, then that's a violation, you should let us know. And we don't have to take that administrative step, but it gives us the option to do it. And so it, it beefs up kind of what they're doing.
It beefs up for the next guy, but for the person that's living there, who's always abided by the rules.
Right.
Doesn't do their damage.
But the rest of the stuff then becomes a disincentive to do that.
But you see, but you see, what it, what it does is everything I just said is, you, you make the rules more onerous, you raise the income limits, and you do exactly what we don't want to do, which is, longer term, you gentrify the city more. If you, if you, if you do kind of a full just cause.
But Chris, I thought we agreed, despite our differences on rent control, that the solution to long-term gentrification is building more housing.
We did.
And that, that what we do on just cause eviction, I mean, San Francisco's problem, they have a shortage of housing.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, that's going to cause gentrification. And what, the, the details of how you notify people when they get a notice to vacate probably make very little difference in that long-term, long-term problem. We're trying to solve that problem. The, the, what, the issues that we're facing tonight are those of immediate displacement.
Right.
They're being felt by.
Right. And I'm, and I'm being asked to enshrine something in the city's constitution that is really, really hard to change to fix a short-term problem. Do you see the problem with that? We should not be enacting super-long-term, difficult-to-change things to fix a short-term problem. That's what this all boils down to.
Well, Chris, the mayor.
Okay, I, I, um, on just cause eviction, I, I really think that we have a very, uh, co, a very well-written, thought-out, uh, section here in, um, section 1705.
Is this the original Jenny readings?
No, this is not. This is from the, um, the, uh, the Tenants Association ordinance. I would suggest that we, we have our, um, City Attorney, uh, fashioned a just cause eviction section based on this, so that it fits in with the existing, um, system that we have. I mean, for instance, you know, it says, it, it makes referrals here to like going, or I presume they'll make, they might be referrals in here about going to the committee. They wouldn't go to the committee, they would be, um, they would be the appropriate person or body for, for our process. But this is a very well-thought-out section, and I think that would provide good direction. It's, um, it's on page seven of, uh,
Stafford.
Seven of attachment, yeah.
1705, yeah.
Yeah.
City manager?
Well, this, given that it's 11:50 PM, um, and there's still other issues to resolve, and some of these are quite contentious, I suggest maybe have a straw poll just to see if there's some movement around this. Just cause eviction and the trigger are probably the two biggest issues. But, you know, we're, you're looking at a slim majority of four to put anything on the ballot. And as Councilmember Clark suggested earlier, if you're going to put something on, you want to have as much support as possible. So I would, I would encourage straw voting and I would encourage compromising to move it all forward.
I'm going to suggest that we, um, direct staff to, uh, to craft a just cause eviction that would be appropriate for, um, our ordinance based on what we have in the 1705.
What was different than when we initially had ours?
We didn't have a just cause eviction in there. And that's one of the legitimate, um, that's really one of the legitimate, um, problems with it.
Jenny, when, when you were working on the thing back in March, did you have any, um, thoughts about how, if the council had wanted just cause eviction, about how you would handle that?
If, if my memory serves me correctly, I think we brought just cause up as a, as a potential issue to the council in October. And so that, that's the last time that we really focused on that and were provided with direction to bring that forward.
Okay.
But my, my sense is that the just cause eviction would be a component of, it was basically the rental housing dispute resolution program, and this would be included in it. But it's really as, um, to provide a, a foundation, a legal foundation for what would happen in court as opposed to having the just cause eviction go through the binding arbitration revision. Possibly you go through mediation, but it would really be addressed in court. That's where the landlord would need to prove that he or she has just caused to evict the tenant.
Okay, so that's my suggestion, is that we, um, direct staff to, uh, to craft a just cause.
I will have, in August, when this, if this comes back, I will have a very lot, have a lot of thought to put into whether or not I can support a just cause eviction, um, portion. Especially if it doesn't automatically sunset after a period of time. Because I have, I have reservations about it being enshrined for the long term and not being able to be changed. Even, even in an ordinance, it's really hard to remove those stored protections.
Well, that's, that's part of what we're doing, is we're making an ordinance. And as a city council, we would have the opportunity, you know, years down if it didn't work properly, to, to change that.
It's, I'm just telling you that even as an ordinance, it's really hard to change.
It's a very, very important component. And, um, I would, uh, you know, I would say that, Chris, you, as many of the voters in Mount, you are also very smart, and I think it's fine for you to think about it quite a bit between now and August 9th. I don't have any problem with that at all.
I'm, I'm just saying it's a little bit, it's a pretty big boulder to push up the hill, that's all I'm saying.
He might not be able to support it in August.
I would hate to have Jenny do a little work, but.
He might not, he might.
I have a question on Part B, protection for families. So you bring in, so I can see that as long as it's within a relative, well, if the unit has four people and it's allowed four, well, let's say, this is an extreme case, that the person that you bring in is a sex offender, registered sex offender, or they have a criminal record. Uh, is that a bias that you cannot, uh, not rent to someone? Or that you can't vent somebody before you allow them to move in? Is that what this says? Or can you, as a landlord, vent the people that come in? But I think on, so.
I have no idea what you're looking at.
Okay, it's on, uh.
1705 D.
17, protection for, 1705, yeah.
Actually, 1705 A, section two, subsection two, sub-subsection B.
B.
Under protections for families.
Protection for families.
Okay, what's the question?
Well, here it says, so long, is that the landlord cannot, as long, so long as the number of occupants does not exceed the maximum number of occupants as determined by section blah, 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 that anybody can come into the unit? So.
A family member.
A family, so let's say the family member is a sex offender or a drug addict or whatever. Can, they're allowed to go in there based on this protection? Are there, are there any exemptions of the landlord, the landlord having any right to say, you, you know, certain, if you have some kind of a background?
Activity is, is.
Well, but that's, well, but I see, I'm not sure how, which one exceeds the other.
I have to read the foregoing section. I'm going to encourage you to keep talking, let me read it, and, because I don't want to give you a hasty answer. I mean, it's.
You wrote this, right?
That's, that's okay for her to say, okay.
It's midnight.
Uh, all right. So, um, another issue, um.
Well, I can move forward. You ran the question, just cause, I can move forward.
Okay.
Do we have a straw vote?
Yeah, so let's take a straw vote for, for having it built on, uh, section 1705. All in favor?
What, sorry, what, what's going on? What, are you back to just cause or are you talking?
No, we're still talking.
We're trying to move on, I mean.
We're going to have a, we're going to have a straw vote.
City clarity for the city.
I got that, but I didn't get, the, the section number didn't ring.
Yes, it's, it's 1705 in the.
In the, in the Charter Amendment.
Yeah, so we're, we're asking, providing direction to, um.
To use this as a guide?
To use this as a guide.
But, okay, but not necessarily just chump this down.
Okay, all, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Does, does that include, Chris had mentioned, um, a sunset clause that would have to be, like, reestablished after two years or something?
Well, maybe that's something we want to think about for the whole ordinance as a sunset clause, but I don't think we want to do it for a specific section.
Well, we can start with the section.
Well, okay.
But, no, but the straw vote is just about, it, this would, it would build on this. So, please, please vote.
Just causes.
If, if, if that's what it takes to move it forward, but like I said, I.
I was going to make like an alternate suggestion that might be just, is that, sort of the just cause protection would be what you wanted to do, and that was tenant relocation. So that if you were, if you were forced out, then the landlord would be responsible for a certain amount of relocation costs.
So it would be a disincent.
Right. I mean, that's the whole point.
I think this is, I think this is a better, you know, much more straightforward, we would go. So I, that, let's, the straw vote, let's vote on it, okay, guys?
Also, that you would also look at San Jose's. Where are we, we're tweaking, so. City Attorney, you would, ma'am, you would be looking at this and also look at San Jose's and see if we're.
I'm happy to do that, I just, the only thing I want to caution is.
I'm happy to do that. I just, the only thing I wanna caution is, we do need to prepare the staff report and the ballot question and work on the charter amendment that appears to have qualified today. And, um, the more kind of original research I need to do over the break, the, the more challenging it's gonna be to bring back something that's fully baked on August ninth.
But I think it's very important if Glenn with like minimum wage where we did regional, that if we do rent control, I think if we can be similar to people in our area, that I think would be beneficial for the region.
And, and what I, what I would wanna do is find out, I'd have to look at what ordinance is gonna be in effect, right? And figure out whether San Jose's new ordinance is changing those provisions if, if we're gonna try and align it, if that's the goal.
Okay.
So, so we're gonna come back on August ninth and you're gonna make the major decisions about the ordinance that night?
No. There's gonna be a fully baked proposal with, I mean, we're gonna have all of the Ts crossed tonight and Jenny's gonna try and have that.
Lenny, we done? Most of the work?
No, no, I mean, San Jose's ordinance is not just cause eviction. We've heard that.
No, but this is one segment.
So, so, no, no, but I mean, what, the way they deal with the notice to vacate is not the way that the charterman does. So either you've, you've gotta direct the city attorney one way or the other to say, come, come back and hear a couple of things we might do. And then on August ninth, we're going to somehow resolve that and have that written in time to be on the ballot.
Okay. So I've asked for a straw vote and we had the straw vote, right? There were four in favor of, of her building on this seventeen oh five. So I think we've given that direction. We'd like you to build on, um.
This is, I'm biting his lip.
You're biting your lip. Now we're moving on.
But I think he knows the two that.
Compromise immediately.
We gotta go back to the five percent.
Five percent ties in with, with San Jose's. So I think that would be compromise.
We gave him, we gave him a just cause.
I, I just think, again, I mean, five percent is better than seven point two percent.
Yeah.
But I, I really think that, um, in all honesty, I don't think it's good government policy for things to be, um, like this, not to fluctuate. I think that the economic conditions do fluctuate. I mean, we hear every time we hear about a budget, it's.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw your argument back at you on just cause evictions, that we can change at any time. We can change the five percent.
We can change that too.
I, I just.
And somebody who's doing a pro forma, I'm thinking you're buying an apartment complex. I don't know what my rents are gonna be because I don't know what the, what the.
So now I understand why the voters of Mountain View want a lack of flexibility because they're afraid that the next council will bounce it up to ten percent.
Yes, because policies should be made by the council and not by charter amendments. Lenny, sorry.
I, I just got, I just got one of the best raises that we've gotten in ten years. And it was three percent. And, um, I, I work somewhere where, you know, people are considered to be really well-paid. I mean, except for the tech companies, of course. So to me, this five percent is, is a lot because that's a very, very big component of anybody's personal budget, you know, is what they have to spend on rent. So saying that, well, it's really okay for, um, the, you know, the rent to go up twice as much as, as a typical, uh, um, raise in a good year. I mean, to me, that's just, before you can even have, have a mediation about it, I mean, this is still complaint-driven. If there were situations where people thought it was acceptable, they don't have to complain. But what we're saying is, you know, what's the smallest amount that they can even start the complaint process? And I, you know, we're not saying with this that all the rents have to be at this amount or they're not gonna go through. We're just saying, if a landlord makes it at, at an amount over whatever the CPI or this, you know, this, this range is, then, then they're gonna have, run the risk of people might complain. And they might actually have to, have to change what they've done. So to me, I, I, I think that we, because of that, because this is complaint-driven, I think we should be airing on the lower side and, um, not the five percent, which I think is pretty high.
So how about, how about that? So, one, three of us that weren't, two of us that weren't really cool on just cause eviction came over, supported just cause eviction.
I'm still mad at you about the sidewalks.
What about the, the, the five percent? But as we, we talk about banking, and rather than banking the full five and five, if you banked and if, if you didn't have a rent increase in one year, you could bank, but then in the second year, you could only bank up to eight percent, not ten percent. You know, it's five percent a year. So we're giving people the right to say you could, you know, if you didn't do a rent increase in one year. So you, you limit the, you, you say people can bank, but it's not a full bank.
All we're saying is with this is, if it's at this level, you can complain. That's really all we're saying.
Mayor?
I'm trying to find, I'm trying to figure out the trigger, Pat. We gotta figure out the trigger.
Do you want it or not? I would stick.
I, I think it's, I can see, I can make one suggestion. But first, I just want context. You're, you're asking for the first comprehensive rent stabilization ordinance in the San Francisco Bay Area in my lifetime to go from rent increases of seven to ten percent all the way down to CPI. That's a, that's, that's a big policy change. That's all I, I just wanna say. A really big policy change. And the second is, maybe you could set it at, um, set it at CPI for a year or two and then it adjusts. And then it defaults to, to five unless the, unless the council changes it. Maybe that's a, maybe that's a compromise. I don't, I don't know. I, I just, I really feel strongly that CPI is the amount that, CPI is what cost of goods go up in general each year. And so I just don't feel like a CPI, general kind of rate of return is a fair rate of return for, for people who are providing housing.
Wait, that's, that's not the rate of return. That's the, that's the annual increase.
I, I know it's the annual increase.
You know, the rate of return is gonna be much higher than that.
Yeah, the rate of return is how, how much does the building appreciate?
You've been arguing and you're seeing.
That's not liquid.
San Jose's puts some time into it. Five percent seems reasonable throughout the region.
No.
Yeah, but it's, well, I'm discussing this with the mayor. So.
So, so many, many other cities have a much lower number than five percent. But some of them are lower than the CPI. So if you wanna look at the rest of the region.
Cities aren't very affordable. How many of your kids are gonna be able to live in San Francisco?
Yeah, so, 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 you know, you, you may, you may object to, to the CPI, but we aren't, that's not the rate of return. That's the annual increase in the rent. It's a totally different number. And San Jose's five percent is higher than just about everything else in the region. So don't use the, the regional argument for that. Do it because you, you think it's unfair to landlords. That's okay.
Well, do we have, we don't even have data that says what's a fair rate of return. So we're, we're making a lot, yeah, again, we're making decisions. So, I mean.
Do, do we have data on what's a fair rate of return?
The, the, the court said there is no one formula for a fair rate of return. So it, it, it really is a policy call at some, some level. The only data we really have is what other cities use as their threshold.
What we usually do is we look at other forms of investment with their bringing and compare it to that. And only property, rental property in this area competes very well with the stock market.
Well, what about four?
Four point two.
Four point two.
Okay.
Seriously, four point two?
No.
Thirty-five. Okay, um, I, uh, I don't know if I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to do some serious thinking about this, about whether I'm gonna be able to support it in, on August ninth. But that's the direction we'll give to.
What, what's the direction we're giving? I missed that.
Five percent.
Yeah. So do we have a straw vote for, uh, for five?
I, I would draft it with five. I mean, there are, you know, if you have enough heartache in, in August, you know, changing a digit isn't the end of the world, but I, I think we should.
Might be.
It's better than changing a just cause paragraph, but I.
Okay. All right, so five percent.
And just so I understand, it's the, the same way the program operates now, that that's the threshold. So any rent increase above the five percent is something that would go, could go all the way through binding arbitration.
Yeah, absolutely.
Correct. Yes.
And anything under the five percent would not be eligible for the program?
Right. And if it was a post ninety-five, it would go through non-binding arbitration.
Correct.
If they go four percent.
Okay. So what's the, what's the starting date for when you would do that? The enactment of the ordinance, the, the tenants' measure has the October nineteenth date? Are you suggesting? There are a number of questions that if you really wanna draft an ordinance this way, you have to answer.
Yeah, it should be when, when it's, when it's adopted by the voters. I, I have, I, there might be strongly around us making things retroactive. I'm, I'm not comfortable with going back. I, I just don't think that's fair.
The, the, the one point I might add for your consideration or just to, to think about is that we currently have a rental housing dispute resolution program that we just got off the ground with the seven point two percent. So we actually have something in, in place. And I, I don't know that.
And what was the starting date for that?
I think we passed, I think it was April twenty-sixth. So it went into effect May twenty-sixth.
So, which, I'm not any longer trying to argue against what you're doing. I'm just trying to make sure that we have answers so that Jenny can get her job. So you wanna use the enacted date of this or May twenty-sixth when we've already started this, this process?
May twenty-sixth.
We were talking.
You wanna make it retroactive.
It's, it's already in place.
It's already placed.
But it's a seven point two.
I don't, I don't understand.
No, how can you make something that we're going five percent and binding down and retroactive?
Well.
You can, I mean, you can decide. I, I mean, we're trying to ask you different things right now. When does the act go into effect and is there a rent rollback? I mean, those are, those are two different concepts. So, I mean, it should go into effect when it goes into effect under state law, you know, when, when a ballot measure is passed. And we're gonna roll back the rents is a different question. And I personally do not support rolling back the rents. Well, it, it doesn't necessarily. Because the rents are already, are back to seven point two. It doesn't necessarily roll back the rent. What you're doing is you're saying, you're looking at the, the next rent increase that is coming up, which may be six months from May.
Yeah.
And comparing it to what it was in May. So, so it's not like you're lowering, lowering an existing rent. It's, it's how much you're allowed to raise it when you, when you raise it. So, so again, you guys can decide what you wanna do, but it's not a rollback.
No, it's not a rollback. It's basically saying, so the base rent was, is the day when we started, um, the, uh, the.
When is that? The program.
Rental housing dispute resolution ordinance.
Right. And that, and that's less than six months ago. So, you know, people haven't even had a six-month lease. They haven't had an increase.
Would you vote for that one?
I will not want to put anything on the ballot.
Okay.
But I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying to.
Put this something you want. I'm just.
Well, I'm, I'm on October nineteenth.
Can I, can I ask a question about that? I'm just trying to think how, how that plays out. So somebody complied with our existing ordinance that's been in effect from, you know, in May, and they did a seven point two percent rent increase in July. And then the, the, this ordinance goes on the ballot and it, and it passes. And it's the five percent and it's five percent within twelve months. So I, I think it could be kinda challenging because any of those tenants could challenge a landlord who legally raised the rent up to seven point two percent based on legislation that the council passed. So I would just raise that, raise that.
It's really hard for us to go back and undo what we've already, the expectations that we already set. I think it's just much cleaner if you have a, a clean cut and say that, you know, the policy that we had is no longer in effect. This supersedes it. It's five percent for any, any increases going forward. I think it's just much cleaner. Cause I mean, put yourself in, in that situation where, um, you know, you raised it seven point two and now all of a sudden there's five percent retroactive. So can I challenge you because you gave me a seven point two when it was okay to do so, but now it isn't? That's, that's kind of the scenario you're getting, you're getting into. You're kind of muddying the waters there. I, 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 I agree with the premise. It's just that we, because we had already just done something that really muddies, it puts them in, it puts people in, it just creates a lot of confusion.
So, so if a landlord reads the newspaper tomorrow and sees that we're going to allow them to raise the rent by only five percent after the ordinance is enacted, what do you think that landlord will do?
This, I.
Right now, they can only do seven point two.
Yeah. And you can still only raise it once a year. And your, I mean, your argument is that if we put something on, they're both gonna fail. So, I mean, that's what you're, apparently you think that our motivation is, which it isn't. So, um, I mean, under your argument, we should just do an urgency ordinance and freeze everything until November.
If I could throw out a potential compromise, uh, one alternative would be to have, so to speak, rollback being effective today, which is the first time this item is sort of substantively being discussed, which would get at Lenny's issue that somebody's gonna go out tomorrow and raise it seven point two, but it addresses the issue of undoing a lawful increase of seven point two up till today.
Okay. All right, we'll go with that.
So I have another question. That's the, um, the flexibility issue you talked about.
Well, we, we have to have language and they're about the ability to modify it.
But I understand that's what you're planning, but Pat talked about after two years, you talked about a supermajority. I think you need to instruct the city attorney how, how you're going to prevent the council next January twentieth or whatever it is, when, when the new council's sworn in, who knows who will be on it, from entirely changing the ordinance because we built flexibility. And so how do you propose that?
I mean, you could do, so we could do something that says, you know, other than sort of like technical corrections, you couldn't do anything that would significantly alter or stray from the original intent for, let's say, up to two years. And then after that, anything that would do that would have to be a supermajority. So you, you, you could make it tougher. Uh, you could correct like, like unintended consequences, but if you're really changing the direction, like repeal, then it would, one, you couldn't do that for two years. And two, it would take a supermajority of the council to do it.
What's that five?
What's a supermajority?
Five or six?
I think it's five.
Okay. And can, can an ordinance include language saying you can't change it, you can't change it from its original intent? And this is like looking at what Congress has done, you know? And, um, is that, is that something that, I mean, that, I mean, I would have trouble figuring out the intent of the council.
So.
Well, it's somewhere between here.
But, but it's, it's really up to.
Our goal is to provide a balanced system of rental and landlord protections to help support a healthy rental market in the city of Mountain View. That is our goal.
Yeah, but I, I think there are, you know, at least seven different ideas in this room about what that means.
What, I, I think the question is gonna be, the, the original intent is to have these concepts, right? Which is to have a, a, a rent threshold, a specific, the rent threshold that's specified in here, just cause eviction. So maybe I need to, in the, you know, after some rest, good night's sleep.
I, I'm not sure we're giving these.
For the record, Jenny was nine time zones away twenty-four hours ago. So she's, uh, working on fumes right now.
So, but I, I'll, I'll look at it. I understand what you mean by intent. And, and if I'm comfortable looking at some other, you know, case law and everything that that's, that's specific enough, then I'll, I'll stick with that. But I'm gonna really look at, I think you want to be able to do the, make the changes that we made to the right to lease ordinance. We found out that we could have clarified the minimum of the two options and those two options are six months and twelve months. You want us to have the flexibility to do that, really in the implementation. But I think that you've spent a lot of time and energy really identifying what you feel are the key concepts that you don't want us to, the future councils, at least for a period of time, to be able to change, which is to eliminate just cause eviction, if that ends up being included, to modify what that rent threshold is and to modify the non-binding arbitration. Those seem to me to be really essential pieces. That should not be capable of being changed for us.
Okay, sorry, sorry to, to press the point.
No, please do. No, please do.
But in this discussion, we've had people say, if you, if we don't end up not liking what the number is, we can change that. So that, I want to know whether changing the number is changing the intent or not? Going from, let's say you adopt 4.2 percent, going from 4.2 to 8.4 percent, is that changing the intent or is that just a technical adjustment?
What if we stayed not exceed five?
I actually think that's a good point by Lenny, and that's helpful to Krishan and I in drafting all this, is to really understand, from your perspective, as the majority that are providing the direction to do this, is that a technical or is that an intent thing?
That's an intent thing.
Let me suggest that, I think we have the gist of it, let Jenny come up with, you know, the four or five key things and we could write it up in a way that says these concepts can't be changed, but other clarifying and technical things could.
My interpretation was, we shouldn't change anything intent related for two years. And that anything after that, intent related, should require a super majority. And, and I just want to, and the other thing is, when you're thinking about administrative changes, one of the things that we should be able to correct is anything that is in direct conflict with other stuff that, you know, whether we remedy the thing that it's in conflict with or this, I don't know, but I think we need to be able to remedy those things so that they're not in conflict with it.
Okay, so.
What about banking?
But did that include the super majority? Did you do a straw poll on all the elements of that?
The super majority was after two years to be able to change anything intent related.
Yes, we, the majority vote, would you like to put on that?
No.
Ken?
No, I just want, I didn't, I didn't hear a vote on that, I wanted to.
No, we, there wasn't.
There was mud.
There was, there was not any dents, okay, so.
Banking.
Was that part of our?
Well, I mean, that was a concept that, I mean, one, it's a concept that's in the tenants coalition. It's something that Jenny asked about back in March or April. And so it's a question is, do we want to allow banking or not? You know, if, you know, it's, you know, like in, you know, one year, it's whatever the rate is, if you didn't give a rate increase in one year, you would still be, you could make, you know, you could like bank that rent increase into the next year and give a bigger rent increase. I think the tenants coalition said it couldn't be any more than a maximum of five, of 10.
10 percent?
So I'm asking, do we want to have banking or not? Or do we just want to say every year there will be, you know, essentially a rent increase? And then the question is, do you, if you bank, maybe is it, is it the full double or is it a little less?
I believe the reason the tenants coalition includes that provision is so that people will not feel they're obligated to raise the rent this year because they know they can catch up next year.
Yep.
And I support that provision in the, in the well-thought-out charter. Do you support that for us?
No, is that?
So the question is. I'm trying to help you craft something that I don't support.
Do we, do we want banking or not?
If you were doing this, John, if you were doing this to enact an ordinance.
Oh, I'm just asking.
Tonight, I, I might be willing to vote for it, but not to put it on the ballot.
No, I think, I can go with that, I think that makes sense, so that we don't want to incentivize every, every five to 10 every year or whatever.
We didn't include banking and mediation, right? But you, you had brought that option to us.
I had, I had language about banking, and then I can look at that language that I proposed earlier and what's in the charter amendment and, and bring it back.
It's a concept essentially two years worth of banking.
I think, maybe we could ask the charter amendment proposers. I think they, theirs was actually more flexible in terms of the banking than what I might have provided. So would you like me to be the one, bring back the one that's most flexible? The theory is that, that the tenants may not get a rent increase.
Right.
But it also makes a limit so that they can't get the full rent increase in the, if they bank two years, they aren't going to be able to get 10 percent, they, you, you change that number so that if they, they wait, they can still get 8 percent the second year, I think, I think you make some sort of a.
Yeah, I, I would. I would prefer it to be more limited, do other people want it to be more?
More, more what?
More limited, I think if somebody isn't going to make a rent increase, it's probably because they, you know, they, they don't need to, to get a reasonable return. And if that's the case, then I don't think we need to build it in.
So are you saying that if, for example, the trigger was 5 percent, the bank, maximum banked amount could be 8 percent?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, I think if we go with kind of the higher percent, the 5 percent versus kind of what you suggested, then I think the banking can be more limited, I think that makes sense.
Okay, so the banking would be 5 percent in one year and 8 percent maximum.
Why not, I, I, okay, I'll, I'll draft that in, the last time I drafted it and brought it back to you, they had blanks. So if you want to change the number at some time, I can just go back. I'd like to, the chances look back, look at.
I think it's going to be 5 and 8. Okay, so are there any, I, I triggered, I don't need that, binding arbitration, cost. It's cost recovery, we're going to continue with that.
Yeah, we did that.
We're going to do that, don't need that. Okay, we've gone through all the things that were on, all the subjects that were on my list. Does anybody else have any subjects that we need to provide direction on? Steph, are there any additional ones that you?
I believe when I brought the ordinance back the last time, it did not include a provision about vacancy control. Do you?
Well, if we have just cause eviction, do we need vacancy control or are they? I thought that there, it was sort of a one or the other thing, do we need both of them?
I'm sure the question is.
Oh, I didn't know the question was that. Okay, yeah, so just, just to be clear, vacancy decontrol is the thing that allows landlords to increase their rent to market after, when a unit is vacant. So I think what you're talking about is that the vacancy decontrol kind of work around for no cause evictions. So you would not need that if you had just cause, because just cause would provide a more comprehensive level of protection.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, so.
Mayor?
Yes.
I want to thank you for spending all the time and energy to bring this forward and having the discussion. I appreciate your leadership on this, we may have many different.
I'm sure she was done, but.
No, I know, but I wanted to get it in before I forgot about it, but, you know, we've had discussions and people are going to go away happy or disappointed or frustrated, but just the fact that we're having the discussion that you brought it forward, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, well, Steph, I think we have gone through all of the topics, do you want to take a quick look to see? Krishan, have you, you can, are there any topics you can think of that we've forgotten?
I don't, I don't think so, I think we will, we will have to take a close look at some of the specifics to make sure we come back with language that covers everything. But I think, I think you've covered, covered most of the points.
Okay, all right, well.
If I could, just to be clear on the process, we'll be having a special meeting on Tuesday, the 9th. Everything has to be 150 percent completed that evening because it literally goes to the printer the next day.
Right.
So we will give you everything in its final form as we can, but basically other than changing a number or a word.
What time, what time are we starting?
Three in the afternoon. Okay, so that brings us to the end of 7.1. I know everybody's all very tired, I'd like to thank everybody for their participation in this meeting. I.
Are we required to do our normal item eight?
I got an item eight, I do.
Can we put that off?
Yeah, we're going to table, we're going to table item eight tonight.
I moved that we table item eight.
I got an item eight.
All right, going to table item eight and then I move to adjourn, thanks, thank you everyone.